Okay, welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Planning Board. It's Tuesday, October 2nd. It's about 7:45 PM. Please be advised that this meeting may be video and audio taped, and it is being video and audio taped. So with that, first item of business here tonight is a request for bond reduction and release of lot number three within Bristol Pond Estates. So, I know we have some information in our packet dealing with this property.
Mr. Chairman, I do apologize, just came out at the last minute here, but it also came to us relatively recently. The recommended cost to complete has been reduced from $368,000 to $237,000. What they have done, they have completed the Marshall Street, street upgrades, they, the board eliminated the structural retaining wall that was within the subdivision. They've installed some curbing, they've installed some street trees, which are all reductions. The cost of the pavement did go up. This was done a number of years ago when pavement was fifty-something a ton, and it's increased measurably, so that was an increase. But overall, the cost complete has declined from $368,000 to $237,000.
We also have something from the developer. The figures are a bit different. Have you tried to reconcile those?
Uh, no.
Have you seen it?
Uh, no.
Betsy, does Tom have this in his package?
He does.
Okay.
I think he does. Yes, he does.
Want to move on in interested time while Tom maybe is on?
That's the best thing to do. Yeah, let's just make sure he's got it there. So, we can give you some time to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Tom, I think that's typical procedure, correct, to try to reconcile and...
It's about a $33,000 swing, Tom. I don't know where it is.
Okay. Yeah, a lot of proponents actually don't do their own estimate to complete, but we can certainly take a look what they've come up with.
You know, and one option here is to reduce it, and then it could always be reduced again, you know, if there's some learning in terms of, you know, what's been completed. So, we may opt to do that. Tom, if you don't, if you can't...
I think the big difference is the pavement. We increased that by $30,000, $34,000.
That's one of the biggest line items.
Yeah.
So, they don't have...
Also, the roadway maintenance is quite a difference, almost $8,000.
Yeah.
They didn't break out the pavement by ton, though, as you did?
Yes, they did not, so...
Okay. And that's what...
Yeah, that's a key item, I think.
No, but that's retail on the ton?
Yes, it is, yep.
So, I mean, this being the case, it sounds like we've pretty much addressed the differential here between these two estimates.
Well, I did want to bring up that one thing that I mentioned about a week and a half ago, and that was that although they look really nice, the river birch, which are here, which are clump trees, they aren't really street trees. They're out in the front of the property here. They look beautiful, but they're not really street trees. They are out along Marshall Street.
Are they already planted, Steve?
Yes, they are already planted.
What was in the plan?
It was the river birch.
It was in the plan, was it river birch?
Yes, yeah. It was a clump river birch was what was approved, so...
Oh, well, and stays.
Unfortunately, so. I understand your concern, but that's what was on the plan.
If, once we approve, if it's alive now, then he doesn't have to pay for maintenance if it gets... They tend to not be very strong. In a strong wind, it could come down. It's in the street. Can we replace it before the street's accepted? It's along Marshall Street.
Yeah, yeah.
So, there's no, it gets planted, it lives for the first couple of seasons, and then we're out of it. That's the way it normally works.
But, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that that can be at the developer's expense if he's working off of a plan, right, an approved plan?
Right. No, I was just more concerned that whether or not we could replace it if it doesn't have the longevity of the others.
So, that would ultimately be the DPW trying to prioritize resources, and, you know, I mean, we don't like to do that.
Exactly.
Right, right, right.
Shift a potential problem to the DPW. I don't think we do it very often, but this might be a case where something was overlooked on the plan.
Is it on the street tree list?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
No, it's not. But you approved it.
I think it might have been thought of as part of the open space area there, even though it is close to the street, so...
So, given that information, I mean, can we proceed with a motion at this point?
Are we going to go with Tom's?
Yeah, I think so. I think we've reconciled to, we may not have gotten it to the dollar, but close enough, I think, where Tom's estimate is.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the bond for Bristol Pond Estates at $2,000, $237,000.
Any further discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote.
He's also looking for a lease of lot three.
Okay. And lot three, we don't have, we don't have a plan here, do we, in terms of which lot that is? Just in terms of what it is?
Nope, I think I can grab a plan if you want.
I think it predates my time with the board, so I'm just not... Either are you familiar with where that lot is?
No. I remember the number.
Is it the last lot? Is it...
No, no. There's only three or four houses built there at present time, so there's plenty of lots left.
I mean, I would, I would prefer if we knew what lot we were approving, and I just...
Hold on, I'll go grab the plan.
Yeah, please, thank you, Betsy.
I mean, a lot of times, they're numbered in a different way than I would.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know. She'll probably put her hands on it pretty quick.
I don't think I've ever noticed this nitrogen loading restriction on a lot in Norfolk before.
Zone two? Yeah, if they're in zone two, it would happen before.
This one's in zone two?
It does seem strange, doesn't it? It's not in the zone two, what subdivision are we talking about?
This is off of Marshall Street.
Does nothing...
Well, the town's water tower?
It's a tower. It's a storage tank.
Yeah, well, isn't there a well there?
No. Pump, get, water gets pumped up to it.
I believe there might be a state well, if I'm remembering from boardroom things.
Yeah, but we don't have the zone two's protected around those state wells.
The state does.
No, we don't. The state doesn't...
The state does, in fact, have absolutely the well regs require...
That's only the 400, that's only the 400 feet. This is not the 400 feet.
Absolutely not. That's totally incorrect.
Well, we can talk about it later, then. I don't think, I actually brought this to the board once before.
I think about four, there's about four lots. Let me see now. This is built, this is built, this is built, and that's built.
Okay, so, in terms of the, I think we're, they weren't abreviated, I don't know what kind of trees they were that were planted along the bank here, right?
Those are years, I think.
Jeff Keynes?
Yeah, so that's this lot here, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Those actually are on the lot, they're not street trees.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish they would rename this whole thing Blue Heron Parkway and not have two separate names, because there's no houses on it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Then if it just...
That actually is why the planning board did it that way. It was a compromise, because they couldn't meet centerline offsets and things like that. So, it was, this is perceived, from a regulatory point of view, as a single roadway divided with a very large landscape median. Let's see, it's really...
And that's even more funny that they've been doing this.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Well, it was approved that way, I don't know who named it.
Because they are narrow, well, the board has left. They are narrow roads. They can't be two-way.
They're one-way.
I think they are.
Right, yeah, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, with that, unless there are any concerns with release of that lot, will I have a motion to...
Well, I'll make a motion to release lot three in Bristol Pond Estates.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote. Okay. Next item of business tonight is the continuation of the public hearing for Oak Knoll Estates. Welcome back.
Be here. This will look familiar to you?
Yes, it does.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Steve O'Connell from Andrew's Survey and Engineering. With me here this evening is the applicant, Gil Axberg. I'd like to give you a little update since our last meeting. We prepared revised plans in response to your consultant's comments. Gino was gracious enough to get his comments on short notice, and Dave Sanderson from Tom's office was gracious enough to meet with me yesterday to go over the comments one at a time as we went through the plans. I don't believe Dave was able to furnish written responses, but as we went through all of the comments, you know, seemed to acknowledge and be satisfied. I'm not going to speak for him, I'm not ready, you know, don't have anything but...
I got something late this afternoon, and I haven't had a chance, I'm not sure if that's a, that's something else.
No, that was from Gino, I believe.
That was Gino's, yep.
Oh, we got something from Dave.
That's a cost to complete, that's a cost to complete.
Other costs of the...
So, we don't have a lot to report. Gino's concern, remaining comment that was not addressed was the height of this retaining wall, which I can confirm is, each of those is four feet. That's why we terraced them with two, so they would not exceed the four-foot mark. We do have conservation to tackle, so, you know, we thought, you know, not to drag this process out, but we feel like we have a solid set of revised plans, that it was time to get rolling with conservation and earth removal, so I'm not sure if it would be appropriate to maybe, you know, draft a decision that we can start to work on while we do conservation, or vote on waivers, or further discussion.
Well, there were a couple of things, one of which, you know, Gino is here for most of our, almost all our meetings, but he may not have been here for the last meeting.
That's right.
And there was some conversation about the language around the blasting, and I think you were going to try to capture that, and maybe it's in here, I don't know, or that's something we ultimately do want in the decision.
That's right. We talked about trying to capture that in the decision as opposed to, you know, maybe having a formal waiver, which maybe not have been appropriate, or...
Maybe you could explain that while Gino is here, so that, because he's typically working with us to craft these...
Language, I agree. So, you're probably aware, Gino, there's a big outcropping here. Some neighbors address some concern about the possibility of blasting. You know, Mr. Axberg met with a road builder friend of his and said that likely wouldn't have to be blasted. It's too small of an area to mobilize for blasting, it would probably be hammered. We talked about having that face of ledge either, you know, not be vertical, but, you know, maybe a one-to-four, or, you know, worst case, well, best case, I guess, would be two-to-one, you know, slope, just so, you know, just to minimize the blasting and hammering needs for the benefits of the abutters. So, we thought, you know, some discussions we had with the board about, you know, being reasonably acceptable to them, was that we would try to capture that in the language, since maybe a waiver wasn't appropriate, but just try to, the plans, the approved plans would ultimately show it, you know, the language would, would capture some flexibility that should, should ledge conditions warrant, you know, sloping of a, you know, vertical face or near-vertical face, then, you know, decisions could be made by engineer on-site at the time. Further review by the board may also be appropriate.
And just excuse me for one minute, but my recollection is where we had that conversation, and it may apply there as well at the entrance, but it was further down around the vicinity of the cul-de-sac, where I think the comment was, I think the comment that I made is, do you really know what you're going to need to do until you get in there? And I think you felt that perhaps we could structure some language that says that, you know, we're going to try to achieve a certain grade...
Right.
But, you know, not necessarily make the final determination until you get in there and you see what that's going to entail...
Sure, sure, yeah.
...in terms of blasting, whatever else you're going to have to deal with.
Yep, yeah, you're correct. The slope that we have here is also two-to-one, which is pretty common in a cut situation with a fill. You know, there are concerns about compaction and stability of the soil, so, but in a cut situation, you're cutting virgin soil, and the, you know, the expectation is that it's going to be stable, structural material, certainly susceptible to erosion, but after proper vegetation and stabilization. So, we can meet the three-to-one requirement, but what it does is it takes us almost all the way over to the property line, and that's a heck of a lot more trees to have to cut down that's going to, you know, minimize a visual buffer to the abutters. So, we did do soil testing, the results were provided on the revised plans, so we don't expect to have blasting in this area. What we will have is some cutting on this side, as shown by the contours, and some fill on this side, as shown by the contours in the wall. But I think what the chairman is referring to is having the flexibility to, outside of the right-of-way, to slope this based on site conditions, possibly during construction, or try to capture the language now that would give some flexibility based on site conditions or construction conditions.
I think it's a, it's a pretty standard condition in construction. If you do encounter monolithic ledge, that you don't try to cut it back to two-to-one, it's, it's really a decision which should be made in the field, because no matter how many probes you put down, it's nothing like seeing the whole ledge face exposed. The only recommendation I might make is to daylight the base of the pavement, because you're apt to have groundwater coming out of that ledge, and if you put the pavement smack up against it, you may get pavement heaving. So, you want to get down for a foot or so before you go up. Other than that, it should be just fine.
Yeah, right, and we, you know, we actually, I'm not sure we expect to encounter ledge necessarily here. We did the soil testing, and we were down 10 feet, we hit some big rocks, but, you know, if some areas that maybe it pops up, I agree wholeheartedly, and definitely in the shoulder of the road, we would bring that down below the ledge elevation if encountered to provide that groundwater a place to go. We definitely wouldn't want to impact the pavement structure.
So, based on your most recent review with a road guy, I mean, blasting's probably not even going to take place?
That's right. We don't expect to have blasting. There'll be a little bit of hammering, just, just to get that edge.
That's very different from blasting.
I agree, because there are some seams in that ledge that you can just put the hammer right in, and it'll just peel right off, because that's the way the seams are kind of running this way. You know, you'd set your machine up with the hammer, and it would come down, move down the rock, and it would come down, so...
So, you're confident that there will need to be no blasting on the site at all?
Well, I think we'd be a little surprised if there was blasting. I hate to make a guarantee.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a positive change, because I think, you know, the abutters were concerned about the integrity of their wells and such, and I know, to your credit, that you were planning and prepared to take some action, working with a company that measures, I guess, the seismic activity, what have you. So, you may not need to do that, is what I'm hearing, correct?
I mean, the same way as Mark Camow, who just came back last meeting, when he wanted to come through, because he had to do a bunch of probes, because ledge shows up sometimes when you don't expect it. You know, obviously, maybe you can condition it that way.
Yeah, I mean, everyone's concerned about ledge, because when they drive down Stop River Road, I mean, this, you can see this ledge. So, everyone thinks there's a road going in there. I mean, as you walk through, I mean, this is ledge.
There is a road going in there.
Yeah, yeah, right, absolutely, but, you know...
Certainly, yeah.
But as you walk through, because a lot of people do walk through that property...
Been through that before.
A lot of people walk through that property, and they see, you know, they see ledge outcroppings here and off the page, and certainly along the street here, so I'm sure their natural reaction is blasting. But we, we...
Well, I have a question about what number 25 on here, because it just doesn't make sense, because it's not what I see when I'm looking at the, at the plan. It says that, it specifies a 50-foot right-of-way for the section that you're following for a residential street, but it says the plan indicates a 60-foot right-of-way. Do you have a 60-foot right-of-way?
We do.
Now, is that 60-foot right-of-way impacting some of the grading? If you could narrow it to a 50 feet? Because you only have one sidewalk. There's a comment here about rather than create two five-foot strips, they just make the right-of-way 60 feet for the entire length. I'm not quite sure exactly what that means. But, does that driveway stop before it gets to the cul-de-sac? I mean, not the driveway, the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Now, why doesn't the sidewalk go up at least halfway around that cul-de-sac? To, you know, if you're going to go around, put a sidewalk in, it should go around and probably connect all the houses to the sidewalk.
Yeah, it could, I mean...
It should.
Yeah, there's no, you know, when you get, you know, just thought it was a good spot to stop it. I mean, it's a cul-de-sac, plenty of room to walk, I mean, you know, we've got, there's got a lot going on here between the road and the walls and the basin and, you know, the gas, some utility's going to be there, telephone and electric, I mean, those will be underground, but, but the 60-foot right-of-way issue, you know, this, the strip that was left here as part of the Stop River subdivision, you know, it reserved the 60-foot strip, that's the space we got to work with. If we proposed 50 feet, there'd either be 10 feet on one side or five feet on each side that would just be, you know, spite strip-type land, which is certainly frowned upon. And, you know, we could create a parcel and convey it, but it's really not our parcel to convey, I mean, it's actually town land that was committed to the applicant, so we're just utilizing the 60 feet.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to explain, I wasn't quite grasping exactly what this meant when I saw this.
Yeah, it was, it was the space that was there, so we're utilizing it. In addition to the 60 feet, there's a 30-foot construction easement on each side, which does allow for the grading. I mean, there's, there's a wider shoulder here than normal, because it's a 60-foot right-of-way. You could, you know, it's five feet on each side. So, you could argue, Steve, that, yeah, you know, it is pushing the grading out to the, to the 60-foot mark as opposed to the 50, but, you know, if we, if we were to, once we get out to that point, if we do something with the ledge at, you know, at a, at a pretty steep face and it's stable ledge, it'll be somewhat irrelevant.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so, I see item 24 refers to a waiver requirement.
Which one are you looking at?
So, that, is that still, still the case? That's the location of the detention basin?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a setback from the road and setback from the property line was a waiver. Did submit formal waiver requests in your request format.
Yeah, not the first time we've had that request.
Yeah, I mean, there are certainly circumstances where, you know, if there was houses here and, you know, no one wanted that in their backyard from a budding project, I could see it certainly being relevant. In this case, you know, we got about 250 feet of Army Corps land and floodplain land till you get to the Stop River.
Okay. So, just to make sure that we're capturing this, we have that waiver, and we have some potential waivers involving the...
Jeff, in this other form, other printout, it's all of his waiver request forms, there's about 10 of them. And the one that's Andrew's survey.
Ah, okay.
Go to the back of it, not go to... After the comments, there's about, what, 50, 100 comments, and then the waiver requests start.
Hmm, okay. This is great.
It's a comprehensive explanation for each waiver.
Well, we're usually doing this on the fly, so this is better than we usually do.
Something formal.
And prior to the waiver request, these are the comments that you sat and reviewed with Dave Sanderson, is that correct?
That's right. Yep, all of our responses.
Our current?
Our current, and those are the ones we went through with Dave, one by one, and he, you know, turned the page. I showed him where we addressed each comment.
Would it be okay to ask Tom if he had any feedback on, if Dave brought him up to speed before he came?
Well, these can just happen to the unseated.
I don't know. Was it worth the question?
Tom, did you have a chance to go with this with Dave?
I did not.
Okay, no pressure from us, I mean, we've got to do some conservation.
They may change once you get through.
Yeah, we like to keep it open, not occupy the board's time, but just, we don't want to have to reopen and re-advertise and re-notify either, but we like to go to conservation with, you know, a stable set of plans. Just, you know, for your edification, the reason we've got to go to conservation is the bylaw, and only the bylaw, not, not the Wetlands Protection Act. The bylaw provides protection for the resource area here known as the floodplain. Under the state guidelines, there's no buffer zone to the floodplain, so we won't even be filing with DEP, it'll just be a bylaw filing with conservation. So, the revised plans do show 100-foot, 1500-foot buffer from that floodplain limit.
The, you have a waiver request form for the, a waiver of the cut slopes from three-to-one to two-to-one? You're only mentioning at the entrance, but you also want it up by the cul-de-sac, so you should add that to this one.
Okay, I'll be happy to update that. And if that's not an appropriate waiver, like we just talked about, well, I can withdraw it and we can try to capture it in the decision, or, but the fact that it's in the regulations, I felt it was appropriate to submit.
Okay. So, so, Tom, in terms of this document from Andrew's survey, has this been vetted by Dave? Is that reflected in his write-up, you know, what's in here? I mean, are we aligned, I guess, with the developers?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dave. Dave had a chance to go over the plans yesterday, but we have not written anything up on this at this point.
Okay, okay. So, we, okay, and you're okay with that? Did it give us a chance?
I'm comfortable, yep, absolutely, yep. Comfortable with, with what Dave and I reviewed. I knew that it would be, you know, quite a bit of work to write them up. You know, you can, you can feel good about them, but letting everyone know about it was another task in itself, 52 comments, so...
We, we have a meeting, at least tentatively scheduled, for the 18th of October.
That's not tentative.
That's fine, that's fine. That's fine, okay, that's fine. Okay. So, is that something that works for you in terms of, you know, us taking official, maybe final, some final action on the plan?
Yeah, yep, that'd be fine. We're going to go to conservation, we'll probably be in front of conservation right in that same time period, so that'd be fine, and I'm not sure if you want, you know, to start on a decision, if...
Well, let me do this, let me ask the question, if anyone is here from the neighborhood, anyone is here? anyone is here, this is a continuation of a public hearing, so it'd be a good time to express any support, any concerns that you have. So seeing none and hearing none, I guess, Gino, any comments in terms of next steps that you think, you know, could put us in a place on the 18th where, you know, we're ready to move forward with a decision?
Well...
Is that a little early?
Yeah. Usually, we close the hearing before drafting a decision. I mean, sometimes in unusual circumstances, you ask that, you know, a draft be ready, even though the hearing is open. But I can do it either way, just whatever.
I think in the past, when Dave was here, we instituted that, and that worked out well, because we could work out any pain points at that time. But I would think it would be in your best interest to hold off until after Cogwell.
Yeah, we're not asking you to close the public hearing for that sake, in case there is a slope.
But I think you put in the cart before the horse with any kind of decision activity.
Sure. Yeah, it would just be draft, but that's fine. Wait a minute, it's not something Gino does. So following that next meeting, if we've got some success with conservation to report, we could potentially close it there.
You know, I suppose I could talk with Gino when we do our written responses. And if we think the issues have been put to bed, Gino might be in a position to start at that point. So maybe we just communicate directly with Gino.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Pressure from us.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of things going on, what Peter said, but also the fact that, you know, there's quite a few requests for waivers here. I think most of them are straightforward, and we know what they are. But some of that language, it would make sense for us to have a couple of weeks, I think, just to get fully aligned with you and make sure that we're moving forward.
Yeah, we're not breaking ground next week. So I think, you know, as long as we seem to have some good dialogue and no major issues that come up during discussion, I think we're comfortable.
My thought on the waivers might be to roll the request for the ledge-faced slope in with the other slope waivers, because it is not strictly in accordance. It's fine with engineering practice, but maybe we add that as part of that waiver, because it is a departure from the road.
Okay, yeah, I'll submit a revised waiver request for that.
Okay, and I guess a couple of things. In terms of those waivers, it's probably a good idea for Bob McGee to see that. I mean, you know, sometimes you get into these projects where you have things washing down onto roadways and problems like that. So he should probably be aware that we're looking at a waiver potentially.
Okay.
Most likely.
Yeah, I think I have some extra copies at your office that I gave you. I'm not sure if, I can send Bob something directly or an extra set to Betsy to pass along?
Whatever.
Whatever Betsy wants.
She's the expert.
Has Bob had any comments to that issue?
Not that I'm aware of. You haven't got any comments from Bob McGee? And Steve brought up a good point, you know, in terms of the street lighting, that we should make sure that Chief Stone is aware of it.
Aware of the request.
Not sure that he'll have any issues with it, but he should at least be aware of it.
Yeah, no streetlights anywhere.
No, in Bob's schedule, you'd probably cross him, if not down there at Toils End.
Yeah.
Why don't you bring it up?
I'm out there a couple of times a week. Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Putting the ledge into the waivers would give us the opportunity to talk about construction practices, which we normally don't get into in conditions. But it sounds like in this case, we have to.
In terms of the drilling versus blasting and that type of thing?
And overexcavating in order to address groundwater and field inspection of the engineer to make, you know, onsite calls if necessary.
Okay.
It might actually be helpful, Steve, if you drew up that section. You know, would you want to bring in the ledge from the edge of, you know, throw up your thoughts. It might be good to see it in a section view. We can evaluate it at that point, so.
If encountered, right. Yeah, I mean, we know it's here. But if encountered anywhere else...
Yeah, sure.
We might even... A subdrain would essentially...
Cover some of that, but I just want to see.
Yeah, I think what we, we got a typical subdrain detail, but I think we could incorporate something like that in the roadway cross-section might be appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
So I think what I'm hearing is that Tom and Gino, you guys have answered your questions sufficiently, so the next couple of weeks, they can be working on this and communicating with you as needed. But, so I think we should be in a good position for the 18th.
Yeah, me too.
Now, it is a continuation of a public hearing, so we'll want to set a time. I don't know if we have other business...
The only agenda item at the moment is the 7:40 public hearing for an estate law.
So maybe 7:50 or something?
Well, if we, if, just want to give you some flexibility. If we're not where we need to be with conservation and we don't really have much to do, I wouldn't want to hold up public hearings after us. But I mean, I know you need to set a time. I don't know if you anticipate anything coming in after, but...
We're always late.
Are you anticipating that if you were to close in one night at Concom, you would be ready on the 18th? But if they continued it, you would be less sure?
If they continued it, or if they had, you know, concerns about something that you...
If they asked for a redesign, right. Okay.
I mean, we'll open and close it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can either come or ask for a continuance. We'll open it and close it, reschedule it.
Okay, yeah. But if you have, if you've got someone scheduled for 8:20?
It's okay. I mean...
It's 8:20 now.
I don't, I don't know that this is going to take a whole long time, even if we, you know, were to be looking to close the public hearing and make a final determination on the project. You know, unless I'm missing something, it sounds like it's been pretty well-vetted. It just needs to be put together in the one concise...
Sure, just wanted to share that thought, maybe, but that sounds fine.
We're not up against, like, a year-end transfer issue or anything? No, but I mean...
No, no, no...
So it's not date-sensitive?
No.
Okay.
Well, I raised an issue at the first meeting and haven't listened to the video on the 18th. So I was reluctant to bring it up, but if you're talking about this, you know, being this close to the end, there's the issue of whether or not you were able to locate the trail on the Army Corps land and whether or not the parcel A open space was going to connect into that trail.
Yeah, the plans show the trail. It's clear on those plans. I'm not sure if you can see from here.
I can't see anything from here.
There's an, there's an opening in the wall.
That's a different property.
That's not yours, but this is.
Oh.
He's one step ahead of us. That's good, that's good.
Like that.
Not hard.
Some notes. So there's a break in the wall, and that's where the trail goes.
Okay.
The trail kind of comes up this way. You know, it can be incorporated into this path around the basin, kind of be, you know, picked back up down here, you know, without any trouble.
Well, what's happening, the way you just described it, is you have a sidewalk along the road at the top of the slope, and then you have a natural trail at the base of the slope.
Right. And then there's an access path here that comes off the sidewalk that's kind of conveniently ties in to that path. So the sidewalk from Stop River ties into the sidewalk of the Rital path, which you could easily, you know, can walk down this access path to the basin, which acts as, you know, which is through parcel A, and then conveniently ties into that trail.
Okay, so perhaps you just didn't highlight it on the plan, but we can highlight it in our decision?
Yeah, I mean, I could even put it on the final plan.
You should. Could you put it on the final plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't...
Yeah, that's easy to do.
Sounds like you're in agreement, so.
Make some notes and, you know, show a little connection.
The only concern I have about the trail coming from the other side is that it extends along private land and ends on private land. So I'm not necessarily suggesting that this trail connect to that one, unless you're offering a public access route on private land. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think so. Okay, so the trail would come, the trail would come from here, go down, go to here, while the sidewalk's up there. So there's really no value to it continue. What is the value for continuing this way?
None for the, probably for the public. And that area's going to be some disturbance during construction. And then as it continues on this side, it's probably no public benefit.
Besides for the people that live there, maybe to access the trail?
Yeah, and they maybe have, you know, friends and relatives.
The trail that is highlighted?
In brown, yep.
In brown? The one is the private one?
Right. No, but I'm just saying, it gives them an alternate path if they want it.
Yeah, so people can come off the sidewalk here, you know, down, and then back that way.
And go that way.
Also leaving a town right-of-way right here.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's where the trail, that's...
Access, so the trail could be moved to that area.
Well, that's, I think, what he has here.
Exactly.
And I assume that, I don't know if the symbology suggests that you're regrading it.
Yep.
That it really should be shown.
Yep, we're regrading this, you know, path down to the basin for maintenance, and that could function as a footpath to tie into the existing path, because that's all within the, you know, parcel A, and then this is all within the easement. They could go right out to the Corps land down to the river. But from here north, southwest, rather, you know, that's private now and it'll remain private.
Yeah. Michelle, you might want to take a look at this plan in closer detail, either at the next meeting or not. But the stretch that I'm speaking of as being somewhat irrelevant runs from here to some, to just kind of Pierce, you know, it's along the basin top?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could walk down and, let's say you had permission from the private landowner. You could walk down here, walk down here, walk along the top of the basin and walk along this path as it exists today.
Without that permission, you just go like this and then come this way?
Right. Without that permission, you come down and you stay on the path that way to the Corps, Army Corps land and down to the river.
So my, my hearing, we want that flexibility, so that the property owner can access. But if the property owner doesn't want people to access, you know, his property, they can access...
I think, I think the maintenance...
The Army Corps land, is that?
We definitely want, I would definitely like access to the Army Corps land. And so I'd like to show this detail in the trail and actually make it a condition that we've have that. But what he's speaking of as the, as the route along the top of the basin strikes me as probably a maintenance, probably needed for maintenance of the basin, and therefore it's probably going to be in the best interest of DPW to have something like that?
Right.
It's required.
Yeah.
Right, and we show that.
I don't think we have to talk about it as a, we have to talk about it as a trail, per se.
Well, it depends how far it goes.
It'll be a cart, it'll be, it'll be a cart path of some sort.
But you're saying you want it to connect?
I, I wouldn't be, once, the highlighted, the highlighted trail on the plan is all on private property. It goes into, into an active farm. I don't think he's going to want people on that. I think he's probably going to end up posting it.
So we don't want the trail, that trail to connect?
No, that's, that's...
You just want access to the detention basin?
I just want, I want access down into the detention basin and into the Army Corps.
Yep.
When I own the land, I advise me not to open it.
Right, right. So I, so it'll be, it'll be one of those informal things until something happens, and then it'll get posted. And I don't think we should get in the middle of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're all set?
We're good. We'll, we'll, for the final plan for endorsement and condition, we'll make sure we have that detail.
But I don't think it's a wise idea to encourage people to walk around the basin and connect it to the path.
I agree with that.
I would say to keep them separate. Don't connect them, because that will encourage people to walk down that path. And I don't think that that's our intent.
Well, we can change the, we can change the material.
So we're saying the same thing. We're not going to connect. We're going to have access to the detention basin.
I don't want them to connect. But he was saying, oh, do you want to connect them so that they can walk out this way and connect? And I'm saying, no, no, keep them separate, because that'll keep anyone who walks in there away from that private path.
Okay, okay.
But if the access to the Corps of Engineers land is going to be through the drainage easement...
Base of the...
We'll need an easement. Besides parcel A, if it's not going to go through parcel A, there's no right to walk through that drainage easement unless it's provided.
Oh, is that part of that, that house parcel?
Yeah, this is a drainage easement. You know, this is parcel A, and then this is a drainage easement from this parcel A over. So, I mean, we can just make it a access parcel, I mean, access drainage tree.
Hug.
Hug. Easement.
Or you could make it an easement within an easement if there's a desire to limit access. You could just have...
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Encourage the path with an access easement. You can leave the rest for the law, if you prefer to do it that way. I hope it matters.
Yeah, we'll chat about that and make it clear our intentions. But we hear where you're coming from, and we agree. We're good. Thank you.
We all set? All right, so we need a motion to continue the public hearing on October 18th.
What time's the other hearing at?
7:40.
So why don't we just schedule this for like 7:45 or something, just...
You just made a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion to continue this hearing till 7:45 on October 18th. And the only reason I'm scheduling it for 7:45 is if the other person cancels, we can just jump to yours and...
Yep, and if one comes in on the agenda after us, make it 7:50. And as long as you don't open it before the posted time, you can open it two hours later. So, works for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Oh, we didn't finish the vote.
Oh, yeah, we didn't. We had a second.
Further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you on the 18th. Thank you.
If you're not ready for the 18th, you'll send us an email. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have the continuation of the public hearing for the residences at Hickory Bend. So gentlemen, please come up. I see Tom DePlacido and Thomas Nannaselli. Welcome back.
So I wish I could say that we've come up with a brilliant new plan since we met two weeks ago. But despite the fact that Tom DePlacido and the engineers have spent a lot of time looking at different possibilities, they really haven't come up with anything yet. And we are losing hope that we will be able to come with some, some type of design that will fit in with what we've already submitted. So we haven't given up hope yet. We'd like to continue this public hearing for another two weeks to keep working at it. But we think that there's a very good chance we're going to come back with and decide just to file an approval-not-required plan. And that's as, that's as fair a summation as I can give you right now. I wish I could, like I say, have more definite information or a concept for you, but we really have come up pretty much empty.
I had, I take away from the last meeting concerning the number of affordables. And I told you I would explore that and have that conversation with Bob Bullock. And I did. And I know he's had a conversation with you. I don't know that I've seen it in writing, but...
I have it. I have it right here. Would you like to say it?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, his opinion, I'll take a look at what he wrote, but I'm sure it's what he told me. Okay, so Bob Bullock, being the zoning enforcement officer, that's his role to determine the number of affordables based on the bylaw and the wording of the bylaw. Prior conversation amongst this board suggested that the number, there couldn't be a portion, a fraction of a unit, so you round up. And in fact, his opinion is contrary to that. a unit, so you round up, and in fact, his opinion is contrary to that, and in fact, unless you were putting in twenty units, you would not be required to put in two units of affordable housing, so, so he's done his job, and obviously, this, this board, you know, supports that decision, so, so that being the case, the plan, the PMLD, if you move in that direction-
Right.
For fifteen, for fifteen units, that would be one affordable unit-
Right.
And not the two. So I stand corrected, even though it was, that was consistent with the conversations the, the planning board had had, the affordable housing bylaw is still fairly new, and we didn't have the case history to reference when we were in here two weeks ago, but now we have an opinion from Mr. Bullock, so, so hopefully that supports your-
It does support us, I mean, it is his opinion.
Challenges, I mean, that's not-
Subjected.
The greatest, you know, issue that you face.
Right, right, but it is his opinion, and it does help us, obviously, not that, you know, Mr. DePlacido told you, we're not opposed to affordable housing, it's just that, you know, the economics of the situation. And, and that brings me to my other comment, as far as we could, that the one alternative open to us for a PMLD would be to make this a condominium, a condominium, and we've told you before that we really don't want to do that, especially in this economy, because it's just too much of a financial risk, that we build however many units of condominiums, and we can't sell them because of the secondary market regulations. So, that being said, Tom has a concept plan that we've developed, showing a potential A and R configuration, and I know that we don't have to show you an A and R plan until you, until we submit it, but he'd like to show it to you, and just, so as a courtesy more than anything else.
Yeah, thank you. And just, so we're all clear, that the biggest challenge that you have is the setback requirements, as they've been stated, to apply to each individual lot-
Correct.
Close to the entire subdivision, so-
Correct.
That's your business, if you choose to pursue it with the, the Board of Appeals, the Zoning Board of Appeals, that's the, if you choose to pursue it.
Yeah, I've looked at that, too, it's, it's difficult, I would think, but I'll continue to think about it and look at it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
As Attorney Nannaselli has stated, and my name is Thomas DePlacido, Jr., for the record, and it's just very difficult, it's, it's the risk and things, you have to have seventy percent sold for a condominium for, for anybody coming in to get permanent financing and things, with Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac and things, so, starting from the ground up and investing literally millions of dollars, it's, it's a risk I really wouldn't want to take with something like that, that people coming in would all be cash buyers, would wanna, you know, go with an adjustable rate mortgage with things, so. That being said, if the economic conditions were a little bit different, we probably would pursue a condominium, and to be upfront, we've even looked at that, and if it was a condominium, and took away all the lot lines, we could get upwards of probably eighteen units in there, if it was duplexes, very similar to the Village on everything.
With the same density as the Village?
Probably less on that, same or less on things, which is, which is actually unfortunate, because, I mean, there's a lot of tax revenue and other things that could result from that. But in an effort to try to do something that creates green space and, and, you know, respects Holbrook Street with the trees and things, and, and everything, sort of came up with this concept plan for an A and R. And what you're looking at is eight individual house lots that conform to the requirements of, of Section K, which is they have thirty thousand square foot at least, hundred fifty foot of frontage. Each house lot egresses from its own frontage, the drivers will be wide enough, what they do is they bisect the lot lines.
Oh.
So, what I did was, that limits our curb cuts, reduces them by three, and we actually, so it does create a nice Village style. One of the important types of things that I've learned about this type of development is people move here for actually being part of a community, closer to their neighbors and things, and, and when people are home, they can walk right next door and stuff, so I really don't want to break it down where it's just houses all coming out individually into Holbrook Street, and I think this leaves some nice, larger areas of, of green, too, where the wet ones are, and you have another section between the other driveway loop, and it just leaves larger, green, open spaces around Holbrook Street, keeps our driveway curb cuts to five instead of eight, and as you can see, each driveway would egress a house through its own frontage and things as well. It's a little creative, and also, at the same time, creates a nice green buffer between Pin Oaks, you do see the back parts of Pin Oaks houses there.
What's the distance?
I'm sorry?
What distance are you trying to maintain?
Well, you actually, can you see the red dashes there?
Yeah.
That's at least twenty-five feet, and the larger ones are fifty feet.
Larger, meaning?
I see one of those with the-
I see the red dashes, what's the larger one?
I'm sorry?
So, so the red dash is fifty feet?
Twenty-five.
That shows the setback, which I believe is twenty-five feet, and then the larger one would be fifty.
Oh, in the back?
Yes.
This?
Yeah, if you see this, this right here is twenty-five-
Yep.
And that would be fifty.
Okay, I get it.
Could you point that out here, Tom, for me?
Basically, the side yard setbacks are twenty-five, theirs are fifty, 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 so in a lot of these, you have fifty-foot setback from the Village and Pin Oaks, in a lot of areas.
And is that denoted on here, the setback, or no?
No, this is, this is really a concept, this, this is a concept plan with things, but-
I thought you were pointing out the setback.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know that that's the setback, just because, you know, all the work was done here and things, and everything with the zoning, but it has the bare essentials that keep coming up, egresses through the front yards, through their frontage, drivers come from Holbrook Street, taking into consideration some of the abutters, we've, you know, kept as green as we could around the property lines of Pin Oaks, and, you know, that thing keeps forestry and some vegetation around Holbrook, and allowing the buffers, so I think it's a nice situation, as far as the Form A goes, and it's still creating the type of Village community setting that we try to achieve when we're, when we're doing these types of development.
And are we all in agreement that this complies with requirements in terms of Form A? I mean, there's no issue with it, just, so that you don't put a lot of work in if there's questions concerned?
Common drive.
The common drive, is that, that requires a variance, doesn't it?
Well, he's, he's suggesting that the lot lines bisect the, the drive-
Yeah.
So that they each do have their own access.
I'm wondering how much, I'm wondering how, how wide an area of driveway has to be on each lot to be considered bisecting, because it's sometimes, this is just a quick sketch, but sometimes it looks like it's pretty close to zero.
Yeah, well, that, that may be another, another issue that Bob Bullock would have to make a determination on.
Common ownership, common ownership.
But I would think ten feet would be a reasonable independent access.
Because, because you're talking about twenty-two, twenty-four?
Well, you're talking, I mean, most average cars are seven to eight feet wide, so even like an eight to nine foot parking spot, if you had eight to nine feet on one side of the property line, and eight to nine feet on the other side of the property line, that would be enough to drive a car through there very easily, and then there would be a, you know, a series of easements, so that people could, you know, go back and forth on different things, on the driveways, but the, the intent is somebody could egress their driveway directly on their own property, so it's, they're not really sharing a driveway. But to try to, the whole concept here, too, is that somebody would move here, they want the independence of a single-family house, but there would be an association here, mow the grass, take care of the grounds, plow the driveways and things, so there still would be an association, so they know they're living to that, you know, moving to that type of arrangement with everything, so, it's not like somebody would put a fence up in the middle of the driveway or something as well.
Two things that we wouldn't have got in an A and R, do you mind? That we wouldn't ask in an AR and R, we have no right to, but, since it's you. Have you considered putting a sidewalk to connect these drives?
Not, not at this time, no.
Well, there's already a sidewalk going in here, isn't there?
I think so.
It's connecting Pin Oaks with the other subdivision on the other side.
That's right.
There's a sidewalk going through.
And Pin Oaks is responsible for a sidewalk to go through there.
Oh, the Pin, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought it was, I thought it was strictly the frontage of this lot that was gonna provide that sidewalk.
No.
No, that's part of a prior deal, so.
Okay, and then you lost the trail to the back property?
Mm-hmm.
But, but you wouldn't be precluded from providing that trail if you wanted to, as an amenity to these, to these people, right?
It's a possibility, but right now, you know, we're unlikely with things, we reduce so many numbers of the houses down and everything else.
The other thing is we, I don't know if you'd consider a, a tree easement along the edge, and so that people didn't cut all the way to the, to the front property line?
I, I would consider something like that, because that's sort of the intent here, I mean, when a sidewalk does go through there and stuff, I mean, that'll take away a lot of the, the larger trees along in the street right away, but in the property and stuff, I would, I would consider something like that, I, I like that concept, to be able to set it back a little bit and stuff.
If you look on Maple Street, we were very careful about the way the trees were taken down to put in the sidewalk along Maple Street.
Including wiggling the sidewalk?
Yeah, it, it meanders around, it really came out quite nice for the entrance to the Toils and Estates down there.
Okay.
So you may want to check that out, because that, that does look nice.
So, like I said, I just, in an effort to try to be open with the board, you know, and just show you where we're going with things potentially here, unless we can find some kind of miracle to do it the other way with things, it, it looks like we're probably gonna head down this path with stuff.
I think it would be good if you reviewed this concept with Mr. Bullock, because if you think of the process, you're just gonna walk out of here with a plan with lot lines on it, you're not gonna really have driveways, so it's gonna be like, you could go through that process and run into additional problems, so maybe you want to share this plan with him, and just, just so you don't do this and have some other issue arise, so.
No, I appreciate the advice, and that was sort of my, my next appointment in, in the, within the week here, so, to sit down with the, the building commissioner, the zoning enforcement officer, just to double-check, but I, like I said, I just wanted to show the board tonight on things.
Appreciate you doing that, I think it may be worth an explanation for, I know we have some abutters here, and, and this is a continuation of a public hearing, so we'll certainly open it up, but before I do that, basically, you know, one of the roles of the planning board is to administer, enforce, if you will, the subdivision control act for the town, so one option that a developer has is, in this particular case, the developer can pursue what's called a Form A type of development, where there's no formal role for the planning board, it, there's certain, certain liberties, certain restrictions, but there's, there's certain things that the, the developer can do, and that they do as, you know, just standard business, when you see homes pop up, if it's not in a subdivision, generally, you know, there's a limited protocol that the developer has to follow, there's, there's limitations, but things that the, the planning board of a given town does not tend to be involved with, and in fact, can't be involved by law, can't infringe on the rights of the developer, so, you know, Mr. DePlacido, you know, he's, you know, you're homeowners in the Village in Rivers Edge, and I've heard very positive things, or some of you are Pin Oaks? Both, but I think it's been done, I think it's well done, I think most people are pleased with their decision to, to reside in, in those properties, and so, you know, Mr. DePlacido, he's, he's coming to us and presenting something that he really doesn't have to present, although he, you know, he's trying to work collaboratively with the planning board, and he recognizes that there's a portion of the, the plan here that it'd be, it'd be wise for him to collaborate with Mr. Bullock to ensure that in fact, it does comply with the Form A requirements, that this isn't a hybrid, which then may require a planning board intervention and approval, okay? So there's some work that we have to do, but, you know, based on what we see and what you see, it, it seems to be a pretty attractive development, I think, limited scope versus some of the, some of the developments were presented previously for various reasons, but I guess, I'm not sure if any of my colleagues would like to add anything to that summary.
Well, I, I just want to ask, Gino, you probably know this, now, in this district, is the required circle, does that have to fit into this lot?
No.
No, okay.
So where this is a continuation of a public hearing for the PMLD, you know, this is a little bit of change in terms of the, the scope of the discussion, but let's open it up, I mean, you, you came this evening, we appreciate you coming, and you should have an opportunity to ask questions, express concerns, what have you, it would be a good time to do that, even though, based on what the board has heard, this is gonna be a continuation, there'll be continued hearings, at least it appears that way. Please.
Hi, I'm Alan Greenstein, I live at Pin Oaks. First of all, the people at Pin Oaks appreciate the development that Tom has done, and we have no problems whatsoever with Tom as a neighbor. I think our primary interests are twofold, one, we'd like to preserve Holbrook Street as much as it can be preserved, and this is a, a democracy, and Tom has the right to build, we're just asking that we preserve as much as we can, and also, there's a little bit of concern, I guess, with one of the houses here, how close it'll come to Pin Oaks, but I think those are our basic issues, is that? Oh, there, there was a question, no, we didn't understand where another sidewalk was going.
The full length of it, there's, there should be a sidewalk that connects Pin Oaks down to 115, it will go right across this parcel.
Okay. On Holbrook Street itself?
On Holbrook Street, yeah.
This is not, this is not a requirement of anything that DePlacido is providing, this was encumbered upon the original Pin Oaks developer.
We do feel that Holbrook is a very, very difficult, I mean, it's a, a very bad road, it's up and down, and there isn't a lot of access, I mean, there isn't a lot of, you can't see, you can't see the site, the sites are bad when you're walking along here, so definitely we feel that something should happen, whether it's flattening out the road, I don't know how you do that, but grading the road so that it's less hilly, but that's not gonna happen, is it? That's-
Well, just, just, just to put it in perspective, so a Form A lot that becomes, you know, the responsibility of, of the town, the developer doesn't have responsibility for that type of so-called mitigation, we use this word mitigation, so, you know, as the scope changes from a subdivision, where we as a planning board, with input from DPW and other authorities, get to, to ask for certain betterments, if you will, some mitigation, that changes with a Form A, but the flip side is that Mr. DePlacido is not putting in as many units, he's putting in eight units instead of, you know-
Fifteen, was it?
So, so that's, that's a trade-off, he really doesn't, he's not in the same financial position to be spending, you know, tens if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on mitigation like that.
I don't think that was addressed to Mr. DePlacido, but let me try and say it another way. Come down there, the way the road is built- He cuts his driveways, which he has to do, we're just suggesting the town look at it from their perspective, and make sure that you're not leaving these people coming out of those driveways-
Absolutely.
Into-
Absolutely, I'm sorry if I gave you that impression.
People drive down that, if you would, people drive much too fast down Holbrook, and we're just saying for the public safety, not for Tom, Mr. DePlacido, but for the good of the public, the town ought to look at that, and just make sure that there's some way of protecting people, that's what I think we're saying.
Understood.
Okay.
So that would be something that we can convey to the DPW, and that's where the chief, a police chief, you know, may have input as well, but not to encumber the developer.
We agree.
That's, really, it's just a matter of the town.
Despite his layout, he still tried to minimize the number of curb cuts onto Holbrook, which he didn't even have to do, but I think a good place for you to possibly start is, I think they have a road safety committee in town, and, you know, see if they're active, I don't even know who oversees them.
Joe, Antonella.
Holly Powers from Pin Oaks.
Holly Powers from Pin Oaks. What other plans are in? Could they superimpose the holes that would be affected in Pin Oaks?
Actually, you see the back areas right there.
Oh, okay.
That's a superimpose right here, yeah.
Okay. So scale and whatever, that's pretty much--
I'm sorry.
This is not to scale.
That would be to scale?
Um, it's pretty close. It's--
And this is 50.
Says one inch is 40 feet on here.
But this has been shrunk down.
That doesn't look to scale to me.
Because it's a reduction.
Yes. This plan was shrunk.
I think the plan looks great. Our concern is, again, is the sidewalk. And I'm still confused, having been on the board before. We thought that this sidewalk, that there was trust money from Jeff at Oxbow and Tom also, that this sidewalk would be, you know-- and it's been there eight plus years now.
Well, the whole of Holbrook Street and 115 is taking an awfully long time also.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
That's outside of our control.
But also, given the fact that there is additional potential development, having one smooth surface once it's done, it'll be a better final product.
Oh, absolutely. But we just wanted to make sure that it was part and parcel so that it will be completed. But the plan looks, you know--
Looks good.
Looks good.
Thank you.
We're happy it's not going to be 50.
Well, this is not being submitted.
This is not submitted. I'm just bringing this before the board here tonight.
My name is Gail Metcalf, and I live at 3 Lois Lane. First of all, my question is, again, this 25, is it 50 feet and then 50 feet? Am I correct? 50 feet from the lot line of Lois on Pin Oaks and then 50 feet, or is it 25 and 25?
There's 25--
Just do a total of 50 feet then.
I'm not sure.
On your property--
Yes, and 25 on--
25 on your property and 25--
It comes out to be 50.
Yeah.
The other thing--
Yeah, but she's-- I think she's one of these houses.
She's one of the first houses.
I'm the first house.
That's what I thought.
3 Lois Lane.
She's 25. That's 50.
Right. So my other question is, what type of homes are you planning on putting in here, Tom?
If you actually took some of the homes that you see at the village and cut them in half--
Okay.
Yeah.
One story or two?
Probably one story on that ranches. There could be a possibility of two, but probably one-story ranches. If you've seen some of the houses over at the village, and a lot of you folks walk through and stuff--
Right.
You'd almost bisect them and take them apart, and that would be like one residence.
So you would leave most of the trees there that you can?
That's why we came up with this concept, yes.
I'm going to go one step further on Barbara Greenstein. Where the 25-foot buffer is, could we request or ask that you put in pine trees so the density would be a little better?
Not knowing what's out there, I couldn't answer that right now. I mean, there might be a lot of maples, hardwoods, other things. I don't know the topography. This is really very much in its infancy.
They may not be clearing. They may be leaving what's already there and only clearing what they need to build the house.
That would be nice.
We don't--
We don't know that.
We don't restrict that.
I'm just saying--
It's an A&R plan.
No, I know. I know. But I'm just putting my comment in.
Yeah. I don't know where septics are going to go yet. I don't know. You know, a lot of different things and stuff. So it, I mean, we're going to try because the people moving here are going to have the same concerns you do. They're going to want buffers between their houses and stuff.
It's a very nice concept. It is.
Thank you.
If you could get approval and decided to go forward, just in order of magnitude, timing, a year, two years, next week, after you get whatever you need to do it--
I mean, we would move forward with things, you know, as buyers come forward. What would happen here is people come to the village. Sometimes the village and the condominium setting isn't quite for every buyer, and they're still looking for the independence, maybe of a single-family lot and a house that's standalone and that independence that goes along with it. But they want their yard, you know, mowed, the driveways plowed, and that outside maintenance taken care of. This would offer that another option besides the village with things. So, you know, this could start as early as next year in the spring, and as buyers, you know, would come forward that maybe didn't find the village, that condominium type of living as attractive, this would be an option for them.
Thank you.
I'm curious. Do you have to finish-- is it the last of the-- is it stage three? Phase three in order to start these, or do you go ahead without finishing phase three of the village?
There's no--
This is no-- no, there's no--
Between the two.
Okay. There is no--
Connection at all. Okay.
Yeah, these are what he referred to as Form A lots. They're also known as approval not required. They're A&R lots. So once we sign the document that gives, you know, calls it a lot, we don't see it again. So it'll all be done through the building department. It won't be done through this board.
And even if we don't sign and it meets the requirements, it's a lot. So--
So in other words, there's no required zoning lot for like, say, 30,000 feet or--
There are requirements.
Oh, there are?
Building Department will handle all those.
Well-- Lot size, frontage.
A&R will-- when we assign the A&R, we'll look at all the things to make sure they comply with zoning.
So in other words, Holbrook Street isn't listed as a-- or that particular land is not zoned for, say, an acre or a half acre?
No. What's the zoning down there?
It's because there's 30,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage for a single-family residence lot that's restricted.
So it's 30,000?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
The key thing to understand is that a planning board legally cannot condition an A&R plan. They can't say, put in buffers, put the house here. It's simply signing a plan that shows the lot line that conforms to zoning. Beyond that, they have to comply with the zoning bylaw, but the planning board legally can't become involved in that process.
So the greatest role, if you will, that we have is upfront in the process that, you know, we should agree that it is a legitimate Form A development, that there is not some other concern, which I think is going to be vetted here with Mr. Bullock in terms of the driveways and such, just to make sure that there's not an issue in terms of it being treated as a Form A as opposed to something different where we would have formal involvement and authority. Okay? So, you know, that being the case, you know, I think you're hearing general support from the board, from abutters, with a caveat that you've got something to work through here with Mr. Bullock to make sure that, you know, you have legitimate Form A, you know, lots here. And I think that might be it. I mean, there's some separate issues in terms of traffic and such, but that's not, you know, because he can proceed, you know, he doesn't need to wait until, you know, there's a construction project on Holbrook to continue, to proceed with his development. If it is a legitimate Form A, no. So those are things that we'll have to take into account as a town. Okay?
One more question, and just can we have a couple of these, too?
Yeah, but those are not official. I want to state that. I mean, you know, they could be tweaked and things. These are strictly concept plans.
Okay.
Okay.
Conceptual, okay.
Okay. So, you know, this is a continuation of a public hearing, so normally, we would vote to, we would take a motion and vote on a continuation. So what's your--
They want about two weeks, right?
Yeah. So what's your request here? We're going to be meeting on the 18th, and we haven't scheduled a meeting beyond the 18th of October at this point.
I think the 18th would be fine. Gives me some time to actually talk with Mr. Bullock, reveal some things here, and make sure that we're headed down the right path with that.
Because we're still holding open the hearing that we're continuing is for the PMLD.
Correct. I would appreciate if that could be held open until we sort of work out these other things and make sure we're headed down the right path.
Yeah, and if you proceed with this, I mean, we can use that as an opportunity to discuss. If it's a Form A, great. I mean, you can go ahead and build the units.
And just withdraw the other one.
Yeah, withdraw.
All right. Well, I appreciate the board's time.
Okay, so let's continue. We have--
I make a motion to continue the hearing for residences at Hickory Bend to October 18th at--
7:50.
Well--
Eight o'clock.
I think we could probably go for eight, yeah.
You'll be here by nine. Eight o'clock.
There are two other people before you, but we clustered them together just in case someone canceled.
You have a second.
So we had a second, but this must be further discussion. This is further discussion?
Yes, it is.
Are we all set?
Call for a vote, Joe.
Okay. Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Anaselli.
Where is Mr. Brave Ants with his Mylar? He was here.
Thank you for coming, folks.
You know what, the--
Tom, Jeff--
Yes.
We don't have a--
The vacuum cleaners are gone.
Project manager on Pin Oaks. We've just been, have we just been relying on Bob McGee to keep the Pin Oaks Hickory Bend, to keep this Holbrook Street mitigation thing moving forward? Because I think the sidewalk has to be put in sooner rather than later.
It's DPW now. So he left me a message late, maybe it was six o'clock, just explaining that he's been very busy as some new people. He's just very busy right now. So I was hard pressed to tell him that we needed him this evening.
No, no, we certainly don't.
If we do, we want to formalize something, give him an opportunity to prepare.
Well, no, I understand that. I think we, I think he would probably prioritize-- he would probably prioritize the planning board stuff and put Fern Ridge ahead of us in the we area. But at the same time, it's just that it's, we don't have a town engineer, and this needs an engineer that, you know, to really keep the discussion moving forward. I would assume it does.
It's not planning board business.
It's mitigation. It's mitigation of the planning board.
Yeah, but the funds have already been, you know, they're already, they already exist.
Yeah, we are holding them.
So there's no time on, there's no restriction on when they get spent, as long as it's held in place.
But the longer you wait, the more expensive they are.
But, I mean, here we are. We're talking about having curb cuts and stuff. So, I mean, it's not a bad thing that the sidewalk hasn't gone in, but now is the time. You know, once something gets approved here, you're saying that that'd be a good time maybe to look at maybe the--
As such contractor who's working on the site anyways worked on our project because he's already mobilized.
Yeah, but we can't. I mean, that's Tom DiPlacido. You know, he's saying we want him on behalf of the town to put in sidewalks.
No, I'm saying that we have the money, and we can contract the work.
It has to go up to--
We got to involve Bob.
It all depends on the length and--
Of course.
Public Works doesn't have to go up to 25,000 bucks.
There is a certain, yeah, the minimum.
25,000 under Public Works.
Yeah, but this sidewalk is probably going to cross that.
You know what? Bob can do it pretty well. Who knows?
I'll tell you what. Let me make up a list of a couple of things. If you've got some things you'd like to hear from Bob McGee, send them to me, and then, or send them to Betsy, and she'll send them to me, and then I'll give it to Bob. Just say, here's some things a planning board would like to discuss, you know, and that'll give him some time to prepare. You come before us and give him a date. Okay?
Or maybe he could use, maybe he could use some engineering support that the planning board has available.
I just want to be careful. You get different accounts and, you know, I mean--
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Date 15.
Jeff, we should probably put Liberty Lane on that list and get the crosswalk squared away.
That would be definitely on the list.
Yeah.
On the list, Tom, right after every move.
Does he have a material of construction that he's going to recommend?
You're wanting us to go on a field trip or something?
I saw a beautiful crosswalk when I was in Needham just today, as a matter of fact.
Did you take a picture?
No, I didn't. But they're squares of granite, but they're about this big. They're beautiful.
Okay. It's a--
Yeah, there's a list. There's a list of them.
Ten after nine. The next item of business is an endorsement of the Mylar for the cottage car wash. So, so are we prepared to do that?
We got some email today about the cottage car wash. Was there something that was changed on the grading or something that--
No, well, it wasn't changed. One of the conditions was that the grading be such that the frontage row could connect with--
Yes.
And I had said--
Oh, I saw that.
It looked like it was possible, but Tom should check it out.
Yeah.
The email was from Tom.
Yeah, we checked it out. It's possible. Oh, okay, good.
Okay, so the Mylars.
We have the Mylars.
Who's got the Mylar?
I have the Mylars. Do they have to vote?
Yeah, they should vote.
Are there--
Oh, yeah, of course.
But are there any comments on these?
In the observation fee and everything.
They did. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, is that--
What?
Two thousand dollars cash.
Yeah.
Now, there's a check for that in the Form K2. It's also submitted, which were comments that she had.
But you've already gone over all these, and everything's fine?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we endorse the plans for cottage car wash.
Hmm, you want to reference the plan? I don't know. These all the same date, or what are they?
Oh, yeah, right.
They're the same. There is a revision for--
Should all have the same date on it.
Okay.
We're getting buried in--
No, it revised on February 4, 2011.
Is that it? Okay.
Is that the landscape plan?
Check the corner.
The landscape plan was revised--
October 1st.
--to add a note regarding mulch cover at the front between the right-of-way line and the existing back of curb, which was also one of Mr. Calucci's comments.
I think there was some landscape. I think it was a mulch link.
And this has a date of January 11, and this has a date of December 2. So what is the original date?
The original date was December 2. These were the first set of revisions, and then we've added September 11, 2012.
So the last revision reviewed by PGC was on February 4. How many revisions have they done since--
But you said there's one even since then?
There's a note added regarding mulch cover on October 1.
Is that the only one since--
2012?
Yes.
What did the numbers mean?
Gina.
Those are in response to their comment, nine, 10, 12. So now, September 11, 2012, we added the town clerk's, we revised the town clerk's name to Mr. Dooley and added the conditions of approval. That was then sent to Mr. Calucci, and in response to that, he had an issue with the grading, the Form K, a comment regarding noise to be monitored after construction, and a concern regarding the cover of what would cover the earth from the property line to the back of sidewalk, which we've added that note on October 1 that it will be mulch. The grading has been addressed. The Form K2 has been revised.
All right. So my original motion was for the plan dated December 2, 2010, most recently revised on October 1, 2012.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote.
When you build--
Uh--
As soon as this gets recorded.
We need some markers.
Oh, Sharpie?
Yeah. You got your architectural thing, Bob?
Maybe we should swing this around.
Yeah, definitely.
You got it? There's quite a set there.
How many sheets are there?
I don't know. It seems like a lot.
A site plan?
He's new at it. He's new at it.
Plan that's 150 feet wide. A lot of detailed sheets, the conditions.
Do you take PDFs of these, electronic copies of the plans?
Hey, Donna? We're going to take a five-minute recess, okay?
So our but-- So, our butt?
Okay, folks, welcome back to this October 2nd meeting of the Norfolk Planning Board. The board has just taken a brief recess to endorse some, some plans. So we are, we're back in business, and, uh, next item of business is to discuss, uh, the zoning warrant articles, uh, which have been, um, a topic of discussion for the past month and a half or so by the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee. Uh, Zoning Bylaw Study Committee is a committee made up of multiple boards and committees of representative from, um, multiple boards and committees. Steve McLean is the representative, uh, from the planning board of, uh, for the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee, so he has participated in, um, all those meetings or pretty much all of them?
Well, I believe I missed one.
Okay. So, um, Steve, perhaps you could, uh, walk us through, perhaps, the, uh, proposed...
Well, I think most of these you people are aware of, uh, the top one is not from the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee, that's, uh, the article, um, that's submitted by the planning board. That's just, um, the one that, um, uh, changes the language for the affordable housing. Now, uh, does anyone need to discuss that? We had already discussed that a couple of weeks ago.
Could you just highlight what, what, where the new words are to verify, to change?
Oh, yeah, this, um, this zoning bylar is merely to encourage the developer to, um, build the affordable housing within their own subdivision. If they want to, uh, build the, uh, affordable housing outside their own subdivision, then it has to be a distinct advantage to the town. That, in the way the language is, it demonstrates a clear benefit to the town. Which is, doesn't say exactly what the benefit is, but it has to be a distinct benefit. The second one is the, um, mere, this one, Gino, is just to, um, get, um, the clearing, to, to adjust the amount of clearing that someone can do on lots within, uh, a non-residential use subdivision, is that right?
Uh, right now, uh...
I thought you split it out, Gino.
Yeah, that, exactly. Right now, it's all lumped together, this splits it out into non-residential and, and residential, and it, it, it at least attempts to clarify that in residential subdivisions, um, you can clear, um, except within the setback areas.
Right, that, that's right. They, they still have the tree bylaws that they have to comply with already when they're working within a, uh, single-family subdivision.
Yes.
The next one increases the amount of, uh, the, the density in the B1 district. Um, that will have...
I have to recuse.
Okay, uh, for the record, Peter Chipman is recusing himself.
Increasing the, um, the, uh, number of bedrooms that are allowed on a single lot within the B1 district, and increasing it from 16, um, to 32 for a single lot, and is, did, um, wasn't there a, um...
If you're just going through a summary, I'd like to put a hold on this to discuss it, um, in more detail.
Sure.
Well, I mean, what are you, what are you saying?
I'm saying that I want to understand, um, the implications of this.
Well, why don't we start with just, um, getting some clarity in terms of what we're looking at, you know, what, what the changes are?
That's why, what I said, what I had said was that, was that, was that I was asking to put a hold on it to come back to discuss it after he goes through the summary of all the different articles?
And I, I'm not sure how much we're going to discuss it this evening because we're just really getting a look at these, but, but let's certainly go through them.
We will have the hearing on these.
I know, I'm, I, if you haven't already guessed, um, I see a lot of things that are, I consider rather significant, uh, things that our planning board representative did not necessarily speak in favor of every one of these, and that I would like to have a better sense so that if, if, I'd like to have a better sense of what the implications are so that before we go into hearing, we have, we don't lose the time that we might need to suggest modifications.
You know, and I certainly can appreciate that, um, as we go through these, and when we're completed with that exercise, there's some things that we'll want to submit for the record, some objective information that I'd like to ensure that we all have before we start any discussions in terms of, you know, what the implications could be.
Right.
And I'm not, that's the piece that I'm not sure we should be taking on this evening until we can digest what, you know, we have for objective information in front of us. That's, that's my opinion.
I, I need to have, I need to have kind of a, of a strategy for moving forward.
A, a lot of what's in this particular article about increasing from 16 to 32, this is nothing that could be done with, uh, the way we deal with septic now. I mean, this is only if we have some sort of a treatment plant, because we, no, no lot within the town would be able to sustain that kind of development. So this is only to increase it if, if, for down the road, if, if, uh, some sort of a treatment plant was to be...
I, I'm interested in learning how this type of density speaks to, how this type of density would play out, not just in terms of septic, but in terms of the character of downtown.
And that's the piece that I'm not ready to take on right now, we're, we're just going through these so that we're clear on what these, uh, proposed bylaw changes are, okay? Now, you're talking about the implications, and, I mean, it's perfectly appropriate for a public hearing. Um, any discussion prior to that, I think it's perfectly appropriate to get some input, objective input from, you know, Gino and from, you know, from Tom, but I'm not ready to take that on tonight in terms of each of our, you know, personal opinions.
I'm not speaking of my personal opinion, I'm trying to gather information, and so what I'm trying to get at, and, and I was happy to do this later, but what I, what I want to get at is what the zoning bylaw study committee was thinking of, and what they're, what they are trying to achieve, and to see if, if what their obje, what, what is the objective for changing it this way? So that I can better understand how it might be consistent or not consistent with our master plan.
I, I can tell you how it got to the plan, the zoning bylaw study committee, is because it had been brought to them, uh, by economics that it would be easier and more affordable, uh, and, uh, to build a commercial building with, um, with, uh, living, uh, residences upstairs from the commercial, but to have more than what we allow now, I think that, that they're asking for two stories of residential above the commercial. Isn't that what it was, Gino? Two stories of residential instead of one story of residential. That's, that's what it came from.
But the second sto, the third story would be a full story?
Yes.
Because it would double the number of bedrooms?
Yes, yes, it would.
It wouldn't be a loft or a, or a...
Depends on how they design it.
It would have the same square, it would have the same gross square footage of a floor plate.
That's correct. Now, the next article...
Didn't you vote for that?
Yes, I did vote for that one. The, um, the next one is, um, uh, just to remove, uh, the reference to, um, uh, this particular, um, section of the zoning bylaws with I-7A that, that restricts this particular type of residential dwelling unit, um, uh, in, is restricted to planned multi-lot development. But there are some lots in town that would not necessarily be appropriate for a planned multi-lot development. So we were just striking the language for, um, the requirement for a planned multi-lot development.
Where, what, is this in the building core or is this in, is this in the business core or is this in the outer?
I-7A, I believe, is in the core, isn't it, Gino?
It's at least in the core, I'm not sure, it might be, it might apply to both at that point, um, just double check. Yeah, that applies to both.
But it is dwelling units as part of a commercial site plan, so...
So it would be a site plan instead of a planned multi-lot development, and then the regular base zoning...
Yes.
Would take over for density? Except that we're changing the density. The density of the article above gets reflected down here.
Correct.
So before you continue, I just want to make sure I understand this one.
What is the, what is the practical, um, planned multi-lot developments have a way of benefiting the town in that they create more flexible, um, design layouts?
Right.
And so what is the benefit of, or what is, what was the, what was the challenge of having planned multi-lot developments? And what is the benefit of doing it this way?
It, it's because there are individual lots that would not be appropriate for a planned multi-lot development.
Like the lots that have, have a lake in front of them?
Yeah, well, possibly, yeah, but, but there's some small lots in the center of town that you would not put a planned multi-lot development in.
Because they're too small?
Because they're too small, yeah.
But you need 80,000 square feet for a planned multi-lot, to qualify for planned multi-lot development to begin with. So if you have a, even a 60,000 square foot lot, you can't do a planned multi-lot development.
So the intent of the bylaw before the change, this particular bylaw, what was it? Maybe that's a good way to introduce these changes, is what was the intent of the bylaw before striking that? Striking that out, was, it was meant to have... Yeah.
Well, it, you don't have to break it into individual lots.
Eighty thousand, eighty thousand.
To qualify.
And in this document of September 30th, it was eight thousand.
For, for a law, an individual lot within...
Lot sizes within the, within the 80,000, you can have, you can have 10.
10 in, in, in the 80,000, yeah.
Okay.
So the 65%, Gino, I mean, what's, what's the intent here?
Well, I remember when this, this was adopted not that long ago, maybe five or six years ago, because originally the B1 district only allowed residences on the upper floors, and this was to allow, uh, a, um, mixed-use development where, for example, the residences might be in the, to the rear of the lot and the commercial to the front of the lot, but not necessarily on separate floors. But it still maintained, the 65% came from the, the theory that if you had a three-story building, two-thirds of it would be residences, one-third resident, so it maintained that same ratio, but without the restriction that it be on the upper floors only.
And that's because the commercial structure already existed, that, that there's some flexibility in terms of the application of that? Well, isn't that what it says?
Flexibility was what, what was, was the intent, but it didn't necessarily, uh, pertain to an, an existing building. It could have been a new building as well, where a new commercial building out front, residential building in the rear.
Okay, okay, so when it says commercial structure prior to residential, it could be still a new development?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The thought process even before the proposed changes was that, at minimum, you would need a two-to-one cost factor to help subsidize the, uh, commercial...
Development, because it won't get built otherwise. And subsequent to that, I think some of these earlier articles that were proposed through, um, the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee was done with a lot of the financial modeling by John Weddleton, and he felt that the need for the increased density to not only help subsidize the commercial structure, but also to create the much-needed door fronts downtown to help support those on a regular basis.
If, in this, in this second paragraph, the residential dwelling units, only if they're part, if, are they always part of a commercial site plan? Or, or when they happen to be part of a commercial site plan?
It's, it says as part of.
So the residential dwelling units have to always be part of a commercial site plan, and then the dwelling units can consist of up to two-thirds, 67, 65% or less, up to two-thirds, would be residential. That's the, that's the two-to-one ratio that Peter was just speaking of.
Right.
Um, when you get, if this is not done through a planned multi-development, how would it be evaluated by, under what approval process would this be evaluated?
It would be site plan approval.
Site plan approval, so do we have the ability to, um, cite?
It says...
Commercial areas? In, do we, do you have the ability to, to modify...
To locate commercial on the site?
To locate commercial on the site and possibly move it around so that there's an aggregate of 65%? But perhaps we want to put the commercial facing the street and the residential, totally 100% of the building, on the backside of the property?
Well, I don't see why it would be any different than if, what, it was a planned multi-lot development.
In a planned multi-lot development, we have all sorts of flexibility. Is it, is it different? I mean, I assume, I assume in a planned multi-lot development, as long as we reach the correct objective, we can relocate and move things around as, as might be best for the site.
If, if I may?
Now, actually, I asked the question not of an abutter, but of, of our town.
As someone that actually understands the B1 district, you have overriding bylaws that require the commercial buildings to be cited 6 to 19 feet. Jeff, I thought that this was something that's going to be discussed in a public hearing, you know, and, you know...
I have, I have a problem.
I mean, they're basically trying to play games with this.
If we're just trying to get clarity.
Most of the votes have gone four-to-one on this zoning bylaw study committee.
You know, Peter...
A couple of the members lied their way, not once, not twice, but three times at meetings.
You know, I have a real problem with what's happening here.
Jeff?
We have a planning board member who is saying he's, who knows more about these proposed changes than the planning board does.
Okay.
And I'm trying to get up to speed.
Time out.
I'm trying to get up to speed.
Show up at public hearings.
Peter, please, please.
Public hearings that aren't always when they say they're going to be.
All right, folks.
Now, I, this has been going on for too long.
Listen, listen, okay, I know that the two of you, you disagree on some of the zoning.
I don't like things thrown down our throat.
Andrea, the way we should approach these things as a planning board is we first need to get clarity on what it is. What it is that the zoning bylaw study committee has discussed and what is going to be proposed at town meetings. Step one, we haven't done that yet, because we're just taking a look at these.
I apologize, that's all I was trying to do tonight was so that I could go away understanding what was going on so that I could set up an opinion.
was going on, so that I could set up an opinion. What I'm doing is responding to way too much information from a member of the board who has recused himself.
I understand.
So, I was trying to get information from our town planner.
I understand. So, I mean, my role of chairman is to try to move the debate forward in a way that's objective, you know, fair.
It would help you-
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do that, but we're gonna just have to take the emotion out of it, or else, you know, we're not going to get the best information in front of us. We're not going to be able to make the best recommendation possible at town meeting, and that, that's not going to serve the residents of the town.
I, I agree with you, I apologize.
Andrea, I do appreciate the passion, you know that, and I do-
It's not, this isn't, this isn't passion. I feel like, I feel like I have been asking since August for information.
Okay. First of all, you're not being excluded, I assure you, because I'm just getting a look at these myself, okay? So, I just want to make it clear to everyone that there's an open process-
And yet, we have a member who's recused himself, who can answer every question in detail.
Well, he's been going to the zoning bylaw study committee meetings, it's an open forum. I went to one of them.
I went to one of them, and nobody showed up.
Okay. So, so let's just be clear, because I don't want the residents of the town to get the wrong impression. This has been an open process, the zoning bylaw study committee, there's representatives of multiple boards and committees, the meetings are posted, and so, you know, Steve has done a good job getting to the meetings. I think he said he may have missed one, but that's pretty good. I mean, so I appreciate him doing that. I understand that he hasn't necessarily agreed with the bylaw study committee on, on all articles, so that's fine. We're gonna have that debate and discussion. What I've done is because I haven't had an opportunity to fully understand what we're looking at here for town meeting, is I've actually reached out to Gino and Tom for some objective information. Not, not opinion, but just objective information in terms of some of the budding communities, just to get some additional information in front of us so that we can make, individually, we can make a decision, and collectively, at some point, we'll need to make a recommendation at that town meeting. So, it's an open process, let's take the emotion out of it, and I guess with that, you know, Steve, please continue.
Can I just, the question I asked, and the, and the reason you saw the emotion was because I asked the question from our town planner to see if I could get an objective response on what happens today, and whether or not what I believe happens today would be able to be done in, under this new article. What I will respond to emotionally is when a board member recuses himself from the process and yet answers the questions, because I'm asking the question of our professionals.
Fair enough. Gino, do you recall what the question is, or repeat the question? Andrea, please, repeat the question.
I think I remember the question, was about the flexibility of a planned multi-lot development versus just a conventional site plan.
And whether or not we can, whether or not we can switch uses in buildings from one building to the other, as long as the aggregate is still met.
Well, you would have some, some authority over that. You, PMLD, you have more authority because it's a special permit, but site plan, you do have, you can condition a site plan by saying, "We want the commercial here, and the residential there," though I think, I don't think there's very much chance of a commercial development wanting to be to the rear of a lot, anyway, but, but that's just an example. I know, there's other, maybe other features that, that you want to, to be able to address. PMLD, the main intent was to be able to share services. Even without a PMLD, we have provisions for shared parking, plus that private agreements would have to be made to do that. Drainage, some of it becomes moot in the, in the B-1 district, because, for one thing, drainage can be provided centrally by the town. If there's a sewer system developed, or capacity acquired, whatever, that becomes automatically a shared system as well, versus a septic system, which, septic system is not going to be able to accommodate the type of density that even the current zoning allows. So, so, yeah, PMLD provides more flexibility, but there is also flexibility just through site plan approval.
When you said a commercial development wouldn't want to be located in the back, what I wanted to make sure is that we wouldn't force them to be in the back, because a site plan review would require one-third of the building area to have commercial development in it.
Right. Well, I wouldn't think that you would make that attempt.
We can still move it.
Sure.
Is this, am I, do I have to read this in concert with other articles, other, there's more to a PMLD than, than just the zoning uses? There's also the parking needs, and the drainage and stuff.
Well, none of that has changed. The only thing that's being done is that's being striked, striked out.
I know, but, but we have these, we have these other benefits that are we forcing, are we forcing to have shared parking, which is always in the best interest of the town?
Mm-hmm.
To have shared parking, we're forcing them into private, we're forcing them into private arrangements. Can we, can we require that they develop those private arrangements? At PMLD, it's, it's given.
No, you can't require it, but it's only, they would only do it if it's in their interest, anyway. And the PMLD, this doesn't prohibit PMLDs, it's, it would, it only would allow the residential development that's not part of a PMLD, for the smaller lots that don't qualify under PMLD. They would still be able to do the mixed-use development.
But I would think the smaller lots would be the ones that would need the, I, this is, this may be, maybe I just have to work as a-
They don't qualify, they're not even eighty thousand.
I know, but I would think that they would be the ones that would benefit the most from stuff like shared parking, and not having to do all the infrastructure, you know, their full independent infrastructure.
But even if it was a PMLD with, with a smaller lot, the shared parking would be adjacent parcels, it wouldn't be that parcel itself.
Yeah. What I like about the PMLD and what we're losing is that we, is that we were encouraging lot owners to come together into cooperative developments. Greater, the greater the lot size, the more flexibility you have to design. And so, by going and, by, by, so I'm, I'm wondering, I, but now we're getting into opinion, but that's what, that's what I see as, that's what I see as a, as something that-
So, let me make sure I understand, you're saying that now there was an incentive for developer put in a PMLD that's going to go away because it's struck from the-
There was an incentive for him to cooperate with his neighbors to form a larger development proposal, where they worked, where they worked together on a development that was large enough for a PMLD, and, and by being large enough, gave us the flexibility to work within a larger palette.
Well, they can still do that, they can still do that.
It was an encourage, by, you're not encouraging it anymore. You are, you are giving them the right to move, you're giving them, you're giving them the ability to move forward on their own, and everybody, given the choice, doesn't necessarily like to cooperate with their neighbors. I mean, that's, I mean, it's, I mean, we've seen that already. We've seen that, you know, outside the core business one.
Yeah, I mean, I think what's gonna happen-
I just wanted to know what was happening.
The context of each of these, I think it's going to be important to consider what the context is in terms of, you know, what parcels are we really talking about, because there's not a whole lot of, in terms of parcels, that would really be involved and impacted by this, correct?
Yes.
So, to think that it's gonna, you know, have such a dramatic effect, I mean, it's pretty limited in terms of the scope, in practical terms.
Well, if it, if it's so limited, it's not, that's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is that, what I'm hearing is that lot, that there are enumber, they are, must be enough lots lower than eighty thousand for this to be, you know, a desired, a desired way to move forward.
Why, I didn't sit in on all the meetings, but my understanding is that we're taking a look, you know, at this greater downtown area, and trying to do everything possible to support a commercial base of, you know, of operations, commercial infrastructure. So, I think the feeling was that this was something that could support, because we need to do all we can, given that we're not on a, you know, major highway, and we're not in that type of corridor, that we need to try to promote, you know, development in terms of commercial development in downtown. So, that's my understanding. Now, Steve, correct me if I'm not wrong, if I'm, if I'm wrong, I mean, you, you attended most of the meetings, I mean, what's the purpose of this?
Well, like Andrea said, that if you do have a planned multi-lot development, there's a lot of things that you can do that you can't do within a site plan. I mean, there's, there's all sorts of things that you can do that, with frontage, and access, and having a common drive, and all these sorts of things that you can have in a planned multi-lot development, that, that's not as easy to do if you're just looking at a site plan. So, that's one thing. I mean, I, so I don't think that the planned multi-lot development would go away if it's a large enough parcel.
On its own.
On its own, right.
The three, the two active developers in our outer business core, and, and the other lot that is, that's, you know, got a "for sale" sign on it, are all over eighty thousand square feet. Five acres, seven acres, two of them are five acres, aren't they? The three, the three active lots are seven, five, and five?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Peter, please.
I don't know where you're referring to. The property that I own?
And yours is five, your neighbor is five?
No, they don't have five, they're just, they're less than four.
Okay, less than four is, eighty thousand is just less than four.
No, it's less, it's less than two.
Yeah. So, it, so it already makes it.
I don't know where you're going, I don't understand the nature of the question.
The, the three lots that are, the three lots that are most likely to be developed in the future are the, the ones that are actively out there marketing are all-
I mean, I currently have a concept plan in front of you folks, and I have an act of violence in the con, but I don't know, I can't speak for, are you talking about Mr. Kelly's property?
Mr. Kelly is seven, isn't he?
Yeah, but that still requires town meeting action, I mean, to move it into the outside the business core.
And the, and, maybe we'll get to that. And the one next to you is, is four?
Yeah, the sheet.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense of, the little ones? Who, who are the little ones?
A lot of the ones that are already developed in the center of town here are the small ones that we're talking about.
Okay, maybe at the site, maybe it'll take the public hearing to see the plan, to understand the implication of this. If they're already developed, then, then site plan review doesn't make a big difference, because they're not gonna, they're not gonna start, they're not gonna tear everything down and start with a fresh palette. They're gonna, the modifications are gonna be small.
Okay. I mean, so back to that point about the limited number of parcels, and in this case, now we're learning, it's probably-
It's not, it's not the undeveloped ones, it's the developed ones.
Correct, correct. So, we're gonna need to have, you know, the B-1, we're gonna need to have that, and be able to reference it in relation to each one of these articles, probably, to do justice to this exercise. That's probably what we're gonna need to do.
Little, which, which lots, which lots are affected by this?
Exactly, exactly. Okay.
Okay. Are we next one, are we ready for the next one? Now, the next one is merely has to do with building height, because we do allow a building height of three stories, but we only allow a build, a, a building height of 40 feet. Now, 40 feet with three stories limits the design that you can have on the building. So, it, it was basically calculated that in order to have a nice sloped roof on a three-story building, that it requires a little bit of extra space, and that's why it's been brought to 46 feet.
So, this relates to the upper article about the increased density residential units, they really are connected together.
Right. Well, we've had three stories for a long time.
Right. But it supports being able to increase the density in a aesthetically pleasing way.
Correct.
And what was the determination in terms of how height is measured, to what, what part of the-
There is a description in there on how to measure height.
Is it median?
It's to the median of the move, of the slope.
And yet, we still needed, we still needed the extra height to the median.
Well, the issue is, if you have ground floor commercial, they may want a 15-foot ceiling or more, deal with mechanical issues and things like that, so, it'd be, it's not, it's not a eight or 10 story, eight or 10-foot high for a story typically.
The, we were looking at the, the parking requirements for the single-family dwellings, and we thought that if someone's living in the center of town, they probably, most likely would have a, a less of a chance of having multiple vehicles. So, what we figured we would do is to reduce the, the required number of spaces per dwelling from two to one. I mean, if anyone builds something, they can always put an extra if they want to, and if someone's going to buy it, they're gonna know that they only have one space, so, you know, it's, it, it would be to anyone's advantage to make a good study of this, to make, to see who they're gonna have living there, to see if they, they should have multiple parking spaces per unit.
The single-family dwelling can have, doesn't have a minimum number, but a dwelling unit other than a single-family dwelling has a minimum number of spaces, not a maximum.
Right. It has a minimum number of one.
And that, so if it's not a single-family dwelling, it's an apartment, or a condo, or a-
Correct. And we brought it down from two to one.
And by "single-family," it's-
Single-family has its own-
Single-family is, is the one without the commercial. It's the one that's not associated with commercial.
So, it depends, you know, when they're developing their dwelling units, if they're making them two-bedroom units, or three-bedroom units, that, that will help inform them how many spaces I would think they're going to probably want to build to make it marketable. If you're doing all studios and one bedrooms, one space is probably fine.
Yeah, you can always do more than the minimum. What's the current?
It's two right now.
Oh, the current is two?
Current is two. So, we're reducing it to one.
Now, in terms of off-street, on-street parking, how did that play into this?
We haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's in here, but, but on-street parking has nothing to do with dwelling units.
Okay, okay.
Because this is meant to be, this has to be on-site.
Right, this has to be on-site.
Right, okay.
All right. Oh, this, this is where we start getting into the, the confusing language of the parking spaces. That, it says the parking space may be considered as part of the requisite parking allocation to a particular lot. If the spaces are entirely on the lot, or the use of the space has been assured through assignment, and on-street parking is, it says where, only if it touches the lot. And what we've done is, we've, we've gotten rid of a lot of that. See, it says where on-street space abuts the frontage of the lot, we got rid of that language, because it is, if you look in the, the article below it, we've put that these spaces can be counted within a certain distance, up to, up to 500 feet. 500 feet is a long walk, but it's a-
So, that, that 500 feet must be, it's, I don't see that written here, so that must be in-
It's in the article below it, right here.
Yeah, 50 feet.
So, you, you get why that, that was taken out, because when we were, we were trying to calculate, when we were trying to calculate whether or not lots could be used that are out on the street, unless it touches your lot, you can't use it. And a lot of these uses will probably not have the same hours of operation- And a lot of these uses will probably not have the same hours of operation. So something like a dentist's office, if there was one to move in, would not probably have the same number of parkings at the same time as, say, a convenience store or something like that. So some of these in, during site plan review could potentially be counted more than once if there's, if there's an overlap of uses and times.
Does that say, does it say that?
No, it doesn't say that, but it's part of the, it's part of the review of the, the planning board.
Well, it, it does sort of say that because it says it can be allocated that way in accordance with the provisions of the shared parking requirements, which is, which is another part of the bylaw that does talk about overlapping hours or, or, you know, non-conflicting hours and such.
Within, within section 16A.
Correct.
And I apologize you didn't ask this question earlier, but in terms of the reasoning for these, you know, when residents go to town meeting, they're used to seeing the proposed article and they're used to seeing some verbiage in terms of, you know, why it's being proposed. Has that been developed? Is it being developed?
To put additional verbiage?
To explain, to explain why, I mean, that, it comes back to your point earlier, Adrian, in terms of.
These things being in context.
Not so much where, but, or who, but why.
Yeah, it's just transparency for the greater public, right?
Yeah, it does seem as though, these do not seem as complete as they usually are, but these just came to us in, in their final format recently because the Board of Selectmen had just looked at them.
So, so, Gino, don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you've, you've attended as many of those as possible, and I know you were on vacation, you weren't able to attend all the sessions, but do you think that's something that you can help pull together some of the reasoning for each of these in terms of? Okay, okay.
Yes.
And that'd be Albos as a board, as well as the residents of the town, the town meeting.
Many of these really all fit together with one rationale, one, one explanation, you know, would suffice because they work together.
That's what I, that's, that's what I, that's what I wanted to understand, is the, is the ultimate rationale because they're small changes in and of themselves and they don't appear, they appear innocuous, but the question is what does the, what does the town center look like fully developed? You know, versus what it would have looked like? And is it consistent with the master plan? Because those are the things, those are the questions that we're, we're charged with.
Absolutely. So.
We're not necessarily charged, well, that's what we're charged with.
Gino will, will spend some time on that. He may need to come back to you, Steve, and other folks in order to, to, to get that completed. And like I mentioned, in the meantime, both Gino and Tom, they've given me some information and it's been distributed to members of the board and we can discuss that. Yeah, Peter, why don't you introduce yourself as a resident of the town, Peter, please?
Peter Chipman. The recommendations are made by the advisory board. The language of the article does not change. The recommendations which Gino puts together for you could probably help the advisory board give rationale, but that's who does the recommendation language.
And I'm not talking about the recommendation language, I'm talking about the language that says, you know, this is being proposed for such and such reason, and we're missing that right now. I mean, people that were able to attend meetings.
And where are you gonna publish that, Jeff?
Well, it's gonna be helpful to this board, number one. That's what I care about most, that we're informed.
You prefaced it with normally people like to know the rationale. I was just curious where you're gonna publish that.
Well, it can be placed where people walk into town meeting, I mean, so that they can read it and know.
I just wanted to know.
They should know.
I mean, it's just not part of the article itself unless the advisory board wants to incorporate language offered up.
The advisory board asks the planning board for their input.
But not only that, I realize the advisory board produces the report of all the warrant articles, but the planning board has a separate legal responsibility to make recommendations on zoning articles. These are not all zoning articles, well, most of these are zoning articles, but, so you do need to make your own recommendations as well. It can be oral, it can be written, it's not as formal as the advisory board report, but you do, are required to make a report.
Jeff, one question for Gino. Gino, actually, isn't the law that requires you to hold a public hearing on it not necessarily make a recommendation on whether?
No, it's also.
Make a recommendation on town meeting floor.
What law is that?
In, in...
I know that there's a requirement for the hearing.
Yeah, the same, in that same section is a requirement to make a report to town meeting. And if, if the planning board does not make a report within six months of its hearing, no, within twenty-one days, what the heck is the specifics now? If town meeting cannot act on a zoning article if, unless at least twenty-one days have passed from the, the planning board hearing without a recommendation. So in other words.
It can actually happen after the town meeting.
Town meeting cannot.
Because we've actually held hearings the night of town meeting.
Town meeting can't act unless the planning board hearing is at least twenty-one days prior to town meeting. If it's less than twenty-one days, town meeting can't act unless planning board makes a report. And again, the report can be oral at, on town meeting floor, it's not a formal, any kind of formal report.
So therefore, if the planning board holds their required public hearing for any zoning changes more than twenty-one days in advance?
Doesn't have to make a report, a town meeting can act anyway.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
It's these, these kind of process questions that I, I'm trying to get the planning board, all of us, all of the members of the planning board, to have a voice in the town meeting recommendations. Not necessarily, not necessarily restricted to our legal authority, but in terms of, in terms of our responsibility to the town to weigh in on changes on.
And I think, like a lot of things that come before the board, until we go through a process and really understand whether we have a board that's unanimous or whether we have disagreement amongst, you know, so in terms of knowing what that means and what that looks like at town meeting, we can't do that yet until we have, you know, the discussion.
No, but that's, but that, but, but I appreciate the time you're taking tonight to figure out what information we need so that we can come, so as a board, we can decide what kind of recommendation to make.
Okay, okay.
Okay, if, if we go on to the next one, I did find an error in the next one. You may want to let Marion know that there's an error in the next article.
Zoning map?
The, yeah, to amend the Norfolk zoning map by adding the following parcels to the B1 outside the business core. It lists map fourteen, block forty-nine, lots four and twenty-one, which is Kids Place, that was specifically left off and voted on at the zoning bylaw study committee.
It specifically was not?
It was not added.
It was not supposed to be in here.
It's not supposed to be in there, right.
The kids' place.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and the, the notations in brackets of Kids Place and Politele, that was just notes for the previous.
Information.
That wasn't intended to be in the, as part of the article.
Did they address the, the zoning map?
No, we never had a copy of it, so we didn't vote on it.
I sent it to someone.
It never got distributed.
Can we send it in? Is it, can we, that's the zoning map?
I sent it to Bob Nicodemus.
Never, never got to the board.
That's what I was gonna raise as a separate question at the end of this, was I thought that we, we adopted the language and we had talked about it this next, next town meeting to adopt the map.
And I specifically had sent them the map.
Well, could you ask Ma, we could put it in.
Is it too late?
Well, she could find out from Marion if it's okay, because she said it's okay to...
Because we put in the article for the floodplain language, so I would think it would be okay for us to put in the floodplain map to follow up.
What's needed to do that? You have the map.
It's, the map is done.
We have the map.
Map is done.
We just were too late when we had the other article written, it was too late for us to add it, so we said as a formality, we'd just do it in the fall.
Yes.
So it would, so the article would be written the same way as this? See if the town will amend the zoning bylaw by adding, by modifying the zoning?
Yeah, we have to replace it.
Well, there's a specific zoning map that, right?
Yeah, we have to replace the existing.
Yeah, dated.
Right.
Whatever it was.
Yeah, replace whatever date with the new.
So could you find out if, if you could, we could put that one in? Because the zoning board, I mean, the, the planning board could put that one in, it doesn't have to go through that.
So what I'm hearing is we could probably put it within that same article?
No.
No, no, separate article. Because this one would be a planning board article.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
As a matter of fact, I even asked about that map while we were at the meeting and...
Didn't come up?
No, no one had a copy of the map. So. Okay, the, the, there is a problem with our earth removal bylaws, as everyone knows. And what we were trying to do is to allow some, some, some material to be moved around within a development. Because the way it is now, in order for them to do something, they have to cart it out and then bring stuff back because they're not allowed to move it from one lot to the next. So this one here would allow some stockpiling within the, it, it's within subdivision? Is it only subdivisions? Or is it within any development, Gino?
Uh, here...
Because this is a, yeah, I'm not as familiar with the zoning part of it, I mean, the, the, the earth removal part of it.
Well, the stockpiling part is, would apply to any parcel of land. So in other words, yeah, if you're leaving it on your own property from one spot to another, you can do that without a permit. Though, I mean, I, it's a matter, it has, it's a matter of interpretation, but there already was an exemption that says within, moving and or stockpiling earth within a subdivision under construction was exempt. However, that was interpreted to mean primarily the road and drainage type system, the infrastructure of the subdivision, and not earth removal on individual lots. So, so in bold, as shown in bold here, to clarify that the intent is also to apply to individual lots, that phrase was added or is proposed to be added.
Now, when you're dealing with contaminated sites, I, I think my understanding is that DEP does not allow you to move any, once you move dirt off of your site, your lot, then you're subject to abating that contaminated soil, where if you keep it, I hope, I hope we're not superseding any kind of DEP rules by now allowing people to move soil that could potentially be contaminated and saying, yeah, sure, take it off your site, bring it somewhere else, we've just signed a permit, does that somehow supersede the DEP rights?
Well, I don't think that we could possibly supersede DEP.
And, and the way?
I was hoping there was no way for somebody to interpret that special permit as, as a, as a challenge to the DEP requirement. We certainly don't want to start carting around contaminated soils.
Right, that's true.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, Peter Chipman, I have extensive background in pollution legal liability as well as remediated contaminated sites in the past. And first of all, no bylaw supersedes the state. Secondly, is whenever you do in fact have to take considered contaminated soils, they have to be completely manifested. So, but no bylaw would be able to supersede the state. They only pull that at the federal level.
I think what she's suggesting, though, is not an identified hazardous waste that's already been, that's already under the jurisdiction of the DEP, but the inadvertent removal because they didn't...
She's just to put the town in a liable position to have granted a permit.
That, for something that we may not have, we may not have known it to be hazardous because it wasn't identified itself.
Well, whatever we're changing here would not change.
We're not making it worse.
Right.
You know, but it's a legitimate question, but I would think the town council would have counseled us along the way, right? I mean, because we've had it for a few years now, right?
Right.
But, I mean, it's a legitimate question, you can certainly ask. But, continue.
Does, does anyone have any issues with that? Because all it is, is adding that extra little thing that says, including construction on individual lots as well as roadways.
So Form A lots would still, if there's gonna be, let's say, a series of Form A lots.
Well, no, because it says within a subdivision.
Yeah, it, it does say within a subdivision.
So that would not be a Form A.
So if it's a Form A lot, you have to keep it on your own lot.
Okay, so if, for example, Tom de Placido, he develops those eight lots, Form A lots, what, what constraints, you know, what are the limitations that he needs to, you know? I don't know, am I opening up?
He could get a special permit to do that. He could still go right and submit for the special permit to do that.
What we're, I think what we're trying to do here is say that you don't need a special permit when you're modifying within the subdivision.
Right.
He's not a subdivision, though. He's using this one as an example.
Right, but, but...
Or contiguous lots that aren't a subdivision, I mean, does it make sense to give some relief for, you know, contiguous?
Because it does say, no earth shall be removed from any parcel of land within the town to another parcel, either within or without the town, without a special permit. So it's, it's saying that if you want to move it from one lot to another, you have to get a special permit.
And how difficult is that? So if, so for that development, if he just needed to get it?
I believe it's our special permit.
So is it just a logistical step to go through?
It's, you know, frankly, it kind of gets overlooked, and so, and so it becomes more of a procedural issue.
Yeah, and why bother having it if it's overlooked?
I know, well, I thought that's what we were, I thought what we were trying to do was, was say that as a matter of course, we would allow this and therefore no special permit was needed.
Which is what we're saying.
I thought that's what we were trying to do. We don't, we don't want a special permit.
And I was just trying to say, you know, do we?
Can we expand it?
It could potentially...
Do we expand it so that someone who's developing contiguous lots, Form A lots, doesn't have?
I have a suggestion to, to address that perhaps. Under B applicability, what if we added words so that it says, no earth shall be removed from any parcel or parcels of land under common ownership within the town to another parcel? Then that would cover adjacent lots under common ownership.
But it would say adjacent lots?
Yes.
No earth shall be removed from adjacent lots to another parcel.
From, from any parcel or parcels under common ownership.
So you, you own it, you can move your dirt around wherever you want.
Exactly.
It doesn't matter if it's a decent.
Contiguous parcels in common ownership.
It doesn't matter if it's adjacent or not, if you want to cart it across town.
Right, they would be contiguous, right?
But why? If you want to cart it across town, do you rather walk?
Because you don't, no, you don't, you want, that truck, the, the truck traffic is, is one of the reasons why we do special permit for earth removal.
I don't know if it's too late to add that on, I mean, you can make that on the floor, I don't know if you, if it's too late to add it on.
Friendly amendment? What do you think?
The, the, if we, if we're proposing it before the planning, before the Board of Selectmen have acted, it may not be an amendment at all. It may, they may accept it.
The Board of Selectmen have already looked at these.
Yeah, but they may, but they, they, looking at them and, and having accepted them for the warrant, are they two different things? Have they begun the discussion or have they closed the?
I, I think what we're gonna have to be careful that we don't do is create something that's different than what has come from the zoning bylaw study committee, which is a collect, you know, collection of people from multiple boards.
Yeah, we can suggest it for spring town meeting. It's a step in the right direction.
If, if, Gino, if you can capture that, I mean, we could put it as a friendly amendment, you know, capture it so that we're prepared at town meeting.
It could be done on the floor of town meeting because the only time you can't bring it forward at town meeting is if it makes it more restrictive. And this would actually make it a little bit less restrictive.
You don't think we can, you don't think we can share it?
Share it in terms of?
You don't think we can, we can craft the language and, and bring it to the attention of the Board of Selectmen that this is?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And have, and, and then they can adopt it as their own if they choose to?
I just don't know in terms of getting... I just don't know in terms of getting the input from the different boards and committees and to do it that way.
Well, that one was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, so we're lucky.
Remember, that this is a town bylaw. This is not a zoning bylaw. That's why it's under the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So they, we could recommend to them to change that a little bit.
And, and that, so that actually is easier because it's their, it's theirs.
And that fits in, I mean, the whole intent of this change was to, to open it up so that people wouldn't have to get, I mean, this just fits right in with the bottom one. It's, it was a technicality that was identified that usually a Form A lot is only one lot or two. In this case, we potentially have eight, it's really like a subdivision, but, you know, so we want it to be treated similarly.
So, if you were to capture that, Gino, and in terms of process, what's your recommendation? Because I would certainly want at least keep the members of the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee informed, you know? I mean, I don't think that's a good thing if we just start working with the Board of Selectmen and they're not even aware that, you know, we've done it. So, should that process be through, through me? And, or, or, you know, you know the all the members of the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee because you participated.
Yeah, they didn't address it.
It just came from the Board of Selectmen.
No, 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 this, no, this came, this came from the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee. This did come, but, but it's submitted by the Board of Selectmen because they control that.
But isn't it the right thing to include the people that have been working on these things in the process? At least make them aware.
I would send it to them to make it aware, but there's not much time. So I would say to send it straight to the Board of Selectmen, but copy everyone that's on the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee.
I appreciate what you're saying because the, the, the source of my passion was the felt, was feeling like Planning Board only had one voice when we have many voices who had shown an interest and wanted to be part of the process. And they didn't show us the same courtesy that you are extending. So I, I appreciate you taking the right...
It was pretty disorganized.
And, and I'm, I'm going to backpedal a little bit because we have to be careful because we haven't even had the public hearing yet. So, I don't want this to be a substitute for the public hearing, you know, on these articles, so...
This particular one doesn't have...
Right, this one doesn't.
Okay, okay, okay. Because it's not zoning?
Right.
Okay. Okay, then if you want to craft something and send it to me, copy, copy in members of the board, the zoning bylaws, and I'll forward it and I'll make comment in terms of the, the support of the members of the Planning Board. Okay?
Okay, now, the next article is a, a new section, which is the I-4C section. And this is for planned multi-lot developments. And this has to do with the outside the business core. That the Planning Board may vary the dimensional requirements of Section I-4B-3. And that's the, that's, that's the one that looks like this, only it's, you know, it has the setback, the 4,000 square feet, well, that's the recommended change. The maximum lot coverage, the minimum side setbacks, the front, you know, the lot frontage, and the, the rear yard setback. So these are all existing with the exception of that one change. So that, that is all being covered by this.
With the exception, this is all existing with the exception of...
That 4,000, that's the one thing that changes. It goes from 8,000 to 4,000. That was a reduction. So, my issue with the article that we're discussing now is that this article does that. That gives the Planning Board the ability to be able to reduce dimensional requirements, which is exactly what this does. But you're starting at a different point. Instead of starting at 8,000 square feet, you're starting at 4,000 square feet. So people could be asking for, God knows what, you know, you never know.
So don't we think that Hickory Bend might want to wait a little while before we decide?
Well, this is the, this is the business core.
This is outside the business core.
This is outside the business core.
So this would greatly benefit someone like them, wouldn't it?
So it's as per, part of the special permit process for a PMLD, it's determined that a comprehensive design concept that addresses architectural detail, detail, the location of buildings in relation to the access road and each other, general open space, local open space adjacent to buildings, pathways, sidewalks, and non-residential or common recreation or assembly facilities. The streetscape issues such as streetlights, street trees, blah, 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 blah. All that can be reviewed and if the Planning Board, if they recommend something that doesn't fit the dimensional requirements as written in I-4B-3, then they could be relaxed by this.
Yeah. So I misspoke. It's outside the business core, but it's the B-1. It's not the C-4.
Correct.
So that's the C-4 over at the...
And would it also, because it qualifies that it's any non-residential or, or common recreational or assembly facility, that if it's residential, then it wouldn't apply? Am I misreading that?
Well, it, it would, it would encompass anything that's in there.
Okay, the residential and the non-residential, I see.
So this is, this is saying that we can vary, but only, we can, we can vary these factors, but only if items one through three are met. We can vary the architectural detail, we can vary building locations, blah, 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 as long as these things are met. We can vary them.
Right.
We can change the number.
Right.
Not to zero, but just, we can just change the number.
Could to zero.
You could put it to zero.
Yeah, no, but it, but it doesn't say, it doesn't say that. It says we can just vary them.
Right.
And only within a PMLD.
Correct, only within a PMLD.
And there's no restriction on what you can vary. There's no limitations.
Any dimensional requirement other than the density of the residences.
Mm-hmm.
What's, I mean, this doesn't, what, what's happening here?
Well, if, if...
Is this different from, this is different from this, right?
This is different than this, right. But they kind of do the same thing. But this one here, you know, it deals with all of the dimensional requirements, depending on what the design is that they come forward with. It, it could take a little tweaking to move this around and move that around, and it might actually be better if you could move something where it doesn't comply with the, with the dimensional requirements outside the business core. And it might actually be a better design. So that's why during site plan review...
Could apply to the C-4?
No, no, that's only outside the business core in the B-1 district.
But still in B-1.
I think it has to do with the section, correct? Is that, because it doesn't say that.
It is, that's it. The I-4 is all, the B-1 district.
What is, what is, so B, B-3 and B-2, is that inner and outer?
Yes, 2 is inner. I, I just, I just added that as a question. Should we provide this flexibility for inside the business core as well?
That was not voted on by, by the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee.
Was it contacted?
No, no, it, it wasn't even brought in.
Was this instead of as of right?
This is, right, this is instead of as of right, yeah.
And it would only be for plant, it wouldn't be site plants?
Correct. Planned multi-lot developments.
I mean, this kind of flexibility doesn't sound like, it sounds like it just benefits everybody.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it has specific criteria to meet, to qualify for. And it's by special permit only, so that's when you have the maximum authority.
Special permit because planned multi-lot development is a special permit.
And, and the, and the final article is the one that changes the specific dimensional requirements within the I-4B-3 outside the business core in the B-1 district. And the change in that, and it really should say in the article, to change from such and such to such and such.
Definitely.
Under C, where it says minimum lot size, 4,000 square feet. Now that has been changed from 8,000 square feet. But my issue with this whole thing has always been that we can already do that. That's what this is.
Yep. And then, is this the first time we're getting to the 4,000, 8,000? No, this gets back to the density, doesn't it? Does this, does density relate here, too?
Well, I suppose that...
I mean, in a way, because you're saying 30,000 square feet.
But when, once you get down to 4,000 square feet, I mean, that's...
Well, it might be a good time, maybe for Gino, maybe you can explain, you, at my request, you put something together, just some objective information. Can you explain, you know, what you've, you've done here? You did, you did some research and you put something together, and I think all of us have, you have a copy of this as well? Peter? You got it? Okay.
Well, that, remember, though, the, the density that we were talking about earlier, those are on, that's per acre, is, is what's written back there.
Yeah, I think...
Those changes to density. These are the, the local town you're talking about.
Right, and that's, yeah, because it's, it's a little bit of fruit salad here trying to compare, but I think you could help us try to understand this a little better, give us some perspective.
I, I really want to understand that, but I still, I'm still, I'm struggling as to what, what this last article is, is doing relative to itself and then relative to the other proposals. It's saying the minimum lot size can, can be 4,000 square feet. 4,000 square feet or 30,000 square feet, what, minimum lot size can be three or 30?
Well, the asterisk is for, is that a PMLD?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for a PMLD. That's what the asterisk is. That's just not here because that asterisk is in zoning.
So the, so how does this, how does this change?
Oh, there it is, yeah.
How does this change of, does this, does this change relate back to any of the other proposals? For density and for, and for getting things out of PMLD?
Because density is defined really in, in two separate areas currently in the B-1 district. It's, it, there's a definition of number of bedrooms per lot, and then there's, then there's two definitions of lot, one in a PMLD and one outside a PMLD, and then two more definitions of outside the business core and, and in the business core. So currently, the, the density allowed is 16 bedrooms, not units, with a maximum of two bedrooms per unit. So that translates to either, anywhere from eight to 16 units per lot, depending on the, on the mix of single, one bedroom and two bedroom.
At, at, and presently, it's at 8,000?
Outside the business core is at 8,000. Inside the business core is 4,000. So...
In a PMLD.
In a PMLD, correct. So theoretically, inside the business core currently, you could have a maximum of 16 units on a 4,000 square foot lot. In a, if it's a PMLD in the business core.
And that's your first paragraph?
That's the first paragraph.
On what you drafted, and we all have, dated September 30th. That's paragraph one.
Yes. Then all of that is then also subject to additional requirements. The one we talked about earlier about the mix of two-thirds, one-third residential to commercial, or being on the upper floors only. So, so that addresses inside the core. Outside the core currently, there's another density restriction of one unit per 5,000 square feet. So that kind of conflicts to some degree with the, the other two density definitions because you could have, it, it's much more restrictive. It would not allow you, even though the, the number of bedrooms per lot also applies to outside the business core, this reduces that so that you, you can't achieve that outside the business core because you can only have one unit per 5,000 square feet.
So this is a, an issue, right? Having bylaws that conflict?
Yes. I mean, they're, they're not in total conflict, but they, well, actually, I guess, yes, in that case, they are, they are in conflict because you, it's impossible to achieve the, the, the number allowed in whatever the number, section number is, based on this one unit per 5,000 square foot restriction.
Yeah, Peter.
I don't think it would conflict because you'd go to the building inspector because one is clearly within a PMLD and one is silent.
Okay, that's a good point. That's a good point.
So, so the one unit per 5,000 could be allowed, so a lower density could be allowed outside of a PMLD?
Well, okay, without this requirement, if you don't have a PMLD, well, well, wait, let's stick with this requirement. Without a PMLD, the minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet, so that would be six units, maximum of six units with this requirement.
Without a PMLD?
Without a PMLD.
Right, okay. Six units per acre.
What, per, per lot? That's only 30,000 square feet.
Oh, because it's 5,000 square feet, right.
You could get another, at least two more units on the acre. So one article would eliminate this restriction of one unit per 5,000 square feet.
Which article? This last one?
No, an earlier, an earlier one.
Yeah, Peter?
One aspect that isn't being discussed, and Steve will remember, and I don't remember if Gino was on vacation or he was in and out of both of it, was for the zoning to reflect realistic financing considerations. The key thing with the planned multi-lot development, given the fact that Fannie and Freddie and any other government-sponsored entity that's buying loans these days, is that you can condo out unless you sold off 70%. That's the reason why DePlacido's in the position he is today or anybody else. So if you want to four-speed six units into an acre, or, excuse me, probably eight units into an acre, it's not going to get built. So therefore, existing zoning matters will not even exist because the financing is in there, it won't get built. Steve knows this was discussed not at one, but two meetings, pretty extensively, and it should be a consideration that zoning reflects financing realities.
What, what are you saying? That the, that, that our, our density is, is forcing attached units in a way that can't be financed? Because I, I'm, I didn't, I'm, I missed, where did I miss that?
I mean, you talking about what Peter just said or what Gino has on the paper?
Under a planned multi-lot development, do, I mean, can...
I'm just trying to figure out, I was trying to figure out what Gino was saying.
That's the only way we need to get through this is here, you know, you get some perspective here, yeah.
All right, under a planned multi-lot development, you do in fact end up with multiple lots, standalone lots in which to develop thesis on.
Right, right.
Okay? That way, it is financeable as a standalone lot. If I put up 10 standalone lots, all right next to what, they can be attached, they can be unattached, they can be, who knows? You can finance them. If I put up 10, 10 lots under existing one per 5,000 square foot zoning on one lot, before we can actually even get them financed, seven of the 10 have to be sold, either in cash or through some alternative form of financing.
Yeah.
It's put financing condo projects at a dead stop.
I, I understand it. It's fascinating. It really changes a lot of, a lot of ways people think. But I'm just, I'm having trouble relating that back to this. I mean, I understand that, but we're talking, we're not talking about attached or detached. We're not talking about, are we talking about, are we talking about whether or not they're attached or detached?
Well, they cannot be attached, can they, outside the business core?
They can attach individual lots.
So I, I'm just having trouble, how, where did that, how did that relate? Am I missing something? I understand it's a really important concept. I just don't know how it relates to what we were just talking about.
Well...
The density conflicts.
Yes.
That's how it came up, is because the one in 5,000, that's how this whole thing... I mean, we're just trying to march through this and try to internalize it, and I know that's what you're doing, and I think we just have to keep marching on and try to piece it together.
Yeah.
What is it saying? What are we trying to do?
Because I was where, I was where you were at, which is, which is, these are apples and oranges, these density requirements?
From the adjacent towns.
Not only that, but just, but just when we went, just when we went from...
I looked at it.
When we went from bedrooms, when we went from bedrooms to units, it was a different, it's a, it's a different thing.
I agree.
So, I mean, that's, so this doesn't, number of units doesn't tell me how many bedrooms there are. So, I mean, just those, I don't understand, why would we, what are we trying to do, having, are, why would we have two different units of measure?
Well, that's, that's a good question. We are, I mean, that's what we already have. But, but I'm noticing...
But there's changes being made, and nobody's changing the unit, that unit of measure? That unit of measure is staying the same, being different?
I, I had drafted an article to remove the one unit per 5,000 per feet, but I don't see it in, in, in what was attached that came back from the selectmen. So, I don't even...
I don't even remember hearing about that.
No, I don't remember seeing that one. That one never showed up at the, at one of the meetings.
All right, so then that paragraph is not applicable.
But it's still there, and it's still separate.
Now, where are the conflicts that you're talking about, the units?
He, up above, in the first paragraph...
Oh, in, in the description?
Yeah, but it's really, it's also in the zoning, the zoning article, the zoning article, changing density is changing bedrooms. Okay?
From 16 to 32.
Yeah, bedrooms. So that gets us, that gets us to the, that gets us to, inside a PMLD, we talk bedrooms per square feet.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then he has this hanging paragraph, outside the business core, dwellings can be developed at a maximum density of units per square feet, which is no longer bedrooms. It's units.
Well, there's units back in the first paragraph also.
Over and above, whether we try to regulate...
16 bedrooms per lot, maximum of two bedrooms per unit.
But, but, but those, that, isn't that math different than one, five?
Well, that's outside the business core, right? Isn't, isn't this inside the business core? And that's also in a PMLD, right?
Yes.
The 5,000 square feet's outside a PMLD, is that correct?
It's, yeah.
It's outside of, it's...
It's just floating on its own.
Yeah. Well, it, it strikes me in this paragraph, I for A11, whether you choose to regulate by bedrooms or dwelling units, that there is an issue that we're regulating it by lot. In other words, allowing 16 units, or 16, or 32, or whatever it is, bedrooms, it makes a huge difference if you're talking about a 4,000 square foot lot, or a 10-acre lot. You're, you're limiting it by lot.
Yeah.
And there may be, you know, real estate or other reasons why you'd want to keep a parcel together, or whatever. If you have five acres of land, you can only put 32 bedrooms on it. If you have 4,000 square feet, you can still put 32 bedrooms on it. That...
Well, it says though, that you can't exceed a ratio of 32 bedrooms for any single lot.
Lot, right.
Okay? And then it says, it shall not exceed the ratio of 16 bedrooms per acre.
No.
For any single lot.
For assisted living.
It's just a...
For assisted living.
Oh, okay.
We put in what I think is a more conventional and rational, which is per acre, or per square feet, or something like that. But for the core use, we're only doing it by bedrooms per lot. So...
That is dangerous.
You know, one, one issue is whether you want to do it by dwelling units or bedrooms, but the, I think perhaps an equally critical, or more critical issue is that you're doing it by lot, where you can have lots ranging from 4,000 square feet to 40 acres. You've still got the same number of bedrooms or units, or whatever.
That's a very good point. That's, that sounds like the crux of the density issue.
And that's kind of what this is, right?
Well, that's just what can you do on a 4,000 square foot lot, fundamentally. I mean, you, you clearly cannot achieve a density of 32 bedrooms.
No.
Or 16, or any, anything else on a 4,000 square foot lot. But, so the rather fact is that limited. But it just seems kind of an irrational mechanism to try to control density by, by a lot, where there's such a huge variability in the size of lots.
But at the same, in the same zoning, in the same Fall Town meeting, we're increasing the number of bedrooms and decreasing the size of the lot. What are, what are we trying to achieve? What is the town trying to achieve? I don't know what, I know, I'm not questioning what the planning board's trying to achieve. What's the town trying to achieve?
I think to address the economics of making a project work economically.
Maximize the number of units you can get on a buildable lot. By, by increasing the number of bedrooms and decreasing the size.
But it's done without thinking through some, some pretty critical issues of lot size.
What does it, what does it look like? It doesn't, I mean, it's this, and it can't be built.
Yeah, we'll come back to that in a second, but, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Jeff, I think with some of the discussion that went on with the zoning bylaw study committee when they were discussing number of bedrooms, I believe that was per a lot, not per 4,000 square foot lot.
No, per anyone.
That was per also 30,000 square foot lot.
Yes, a single lot.
Okay, so therefore, they didn't break it down by 4,000 square foot lot, they broke it down by the existing PMLD within the business core, because much of this height requirement, increased density was to help along the number of units above commercial. So therefore, yes, Tom, it's absolutely ludicrous thinking that you're going to get 32 bedrooms on 4,000 square feet. It's self-limiting.
Yes.
The, the bylaw study committee realized it was self-limiting. It's not physically possible, even if you put your own septic system on there. Okay? So that wasn't the intention. The intention was to get the number of viable bedrooms on the now-allowed 30,000 square foot lot, which exists within the B1 district today.
A 30,000 square foot lot outside of a PMLD, that's what you're talking about, right?
30,000 square foot lot is a Form A lot under zoning into town of Norfolk, B1 district.
The...
Yeah, but where the town is really, is really selling this economic push that we're trying to encourage short, is for lots that are greater than 30,000 feet, that are now constricted and cannot exceed 32 bedrooms, even if their lot is bigger than 30,000 square feet. If it's 60,000 square feet, or 120,000 square feet, they're limited now. It shall not exceed 32 bedrooms for a single lot. So, that's kind of...
Well, except by special permission.
Or, or at that point, to do a PMLD.
Right.
You can do a PMLD.
Because if they have 30, or maybe not 60, but if they have 80, at that point, they can throw the whole rules out and come up with...
But the PMLD is, is perceived of as discretionary, whereas, whereas the ability to work within, without the PMLD on a larger lot, we would encourage, you know, we would, we would, the density, density is, is usually a per acre, as opposed to per lot. And it, it, it's hard to, it's hard to, it's hard to take, it's hard, the density changes when you, when you define it by lot. It changes lot by lot. And so we, so we lose content, we lose consistency.
But the conversation that went on, I think they were still trying to hold on to unfortunately, the erroneous bylaw that had both lot density and bedroom density, for lack of a better term. They were still trying to find a way to shoehorn it in.
So if you look at the other neighboring towns that you gave as examples, every single example is a unit per square footage of lot area.
Yeah.
So it completely addresses what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, but remember that what they were looking at was existing zoning, and they were adapting existing zoning. They didn't go through and redraft everything to, to, to bring it up to analyzing everything by square footage.
Right.
It's called a spade a spade. They're trying to keep families out, they don't want school kids in. That's what existing zoning says.
You know...
And that's what the ongoing zoning says.
16, 16 bedrooms per lot, when your lot is 4,000, can fit a lot of families. So...
But if you go in, if you go in section F, and it limits you to two bedrooms per unit, that's a totally different limitation.
Can we keep, can we keep this back on with the facts?
Yeah, just keep it objective, yeah.
Um, the, the thing that is, that, does, does, does lot do anything but hurt us? Can't we change that to acreage? And what would the acreage be? What, at 32 bedrooms, for, what is the density that zoning bylaw study committee was trying to get? Earlier, when they changed 16 to 32, earlier I, I heard you say, they want to change a two-story building to a three-story building, so they get a whole extra floor, so that's where the, that's where the doubling came from.
That's, that's where the doubling comes from, right?
But the dub, that's where the doubling comes from, but that's not lot, that's not, that's acreage, isn't it? What is, what would the acreage of lot be? What was, what's the translation?
Well, that's the 30,000 square feet. That's, because that's, unless it's a PMLD, a 30,000 square foot lot is what's required.
Is lot, lots defined?
It's, it's getting late, and I tell you, I'll speak for myself, this is the last thing zoning that I want to be dealing with at 11 o'clock at night.
I didn't understand it at 4 o'clock.
So, yeah, I, I'm tired. But Tom, just for the record, why don't you just briefly introduce what you've done, and, you know, perhaps we'll need to make some modifications. But I think at the end of the day, we're going to have to use the next couple week, weeks to clarify for ourselves, first and foremost, so that we can explain to people who are going to be participating in the public hearings, what we're trying to accomplish, how we're going to try to accomplish it. If there are some internal inconsistencies, we need to know whether they're significant enough, which would preclude us from moving ahead with some of them. We just need to work through that over the next couple weeks. And I'll, I'll admit, I mean, zoning, it's, it's tough. I mean, you, you know, Gino, you do this all the time, so, I mean, you're pretty comfortable, you know, with the implications of one article, one bylaw with another, in terms of piecing that puzzle together. But, you know, most of us don't spend a lot of time with zoning, so help us. Help us over the next couple weeks, try to piece this together, to understand. It sounds like we've got some issues with the zoning bylaws that exist today, and I certainly don't want to make them more confusing and inconsistent by the changes we're making. So let's make sure that we don't do that. But aside from that, let's understand what the, what the changes are, and the interrelationships. And I'm not sure what that looks like. It's almost like a three-dimensional, you know, I don't know. Help us. Help us, Gino, please. So, Tom?
Well, I was just trying to show what is probably the maximum reasonable attainable density on a 4,000 square foot lot, or you can, you can actually use multiples of 4,000 square foot lots. Multiply it by 10, and you got a 40,000 square foot lot. And it's probably three units per acre. And if you figure the inefficiencies that start to creep in as the development gets bigger, it's going to be less than that. But that's, that's the leading factor.
That would be, that would be 30 units per acre, because you're talking about a 4,000 square foot lot, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, and a 4,000 square foot lot with three units would have six bedrooms for 4,000?
That's correct, yes. With the two-bedroom limitation, yes.
So, is, where does six, what, 16, what's 16 and 32?
Well, again, it's because it's per lot, without any further...
It's really, it's trying to address what Steve said, the 30,000.
It's, just because most bylaws do it in units per acre. That's probably the most conventional unit, but... So what you can really do is, is seven times, you can do 21 units an acre. That's about all you can physically ever fit, and it would be less than that, because you get inefficiencies in the layout as, as a development gets bigger like that.
So maximum development?
Yeah.
Is seven units per acre?
No, seven to 21 units per acre.
I don't know why we wouldn't want to look at the more conventional. It seems like the towns that are like us do the one unit per about 2,000 square feet.
Well, I can tell you, in downtown Canton...
And they're talking upper floors only?
They have an economic revitalization district, and they tried to set the density reasonably high to make it economically worthwhile to tear down, outmoded buildings and replace them. They set it at 2,500 square foot per unit, and they've never attained it on a development yet. It's just not, you can't do it with a conventional two-story type of building with parking and all the rest of it. It tends to fall a little bit short of that. So...
Which town was that?
I can't...
So 2,000 is probably more reasonable.
Yeah. It's called, it's called the CCEOD. It's the central part of town, and...
Unit, one unit per 2,000?
2,500.
And that's what I see for Millis.
It's Millis, it's Franklin.
You probably can't do that.
Essentially, it's Medfield.
Tom, is that from a REED development?
Yes, John's done a lot of stuff there. But, and he's astute enough to know what he can do and attract the land, and he, he can never quite make the density.
One unit per 2,000 is maximum development. It's 32 bedrooms.
I mean, that's what I think we want to be doing, is looking at other towns that have had successful growth in their downtown centers, and what have, what have developers found attractive? Why, why rearmed the wheel? It's right there. It's right around the corner.
And, and you know, we, I wasn't sure, when I asked you to put this together, Gino, I wasn't sure, you know, we were, we were going to go from here. But, you know, I think that's one avenue to take, is to look at, you know, what's effective, and try to compare what we have versus, you know, what they have. But my concern is, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to convert everything over, so we're going to have to, it's almost like English metric here. We're going to have to line these things up, and, you know, make some sense out of them, I think.
Yeah, and I'm...
Help us do that.
I, I can't translate the proposals into density.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can't, I mean, I, that's how far I got. I got a, I got a title. I can't make the translation. So I don't know, I really don't even know...
Especially at 11 o'clock at night, it's, it's tough.
No, I couldn't do it at four. I don't know what, I don't know what zoning bylaw study committee wants to do, besides add a floor. I don't know what the density...
That part's clear.
That part's clear.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't know what the density they're looking for. I don't, can't visualize what downtown would look like if this was the proposed zoning.
Okay.
I, I can't.
So...
To clarify, it's not zoning bylaw trying to add a floor. Third floor exists, it exists architecturally.
Add some height.
It's, the only thing you're going to do is not get stuck with a flat roof.
Yeah. Well, then why the, then why 16 to 32?
The bedrooms, that was one of the first meetings, I wasn't even part of that.
Yeah.
And I don't understand why. That's a throwback to an old zoning bylaw.
I think that we only allowed one floor of residential above commercial before, didn't we? I, I don't remember, we allowed two floors.
Steve, I think that...
Went out with the great washout, when they washed out about 40 zoning articles about three years ago?
I, what, but what was zoning, what was zoning bylaw study committee trying to do, if they weren't trying to add a floor of residential?
Well, they weren't trying to encourage the second floor of residential. That's what they were trying to do.
And do it in an architecture... And do it in an architecturally pleasing way.
Yes.
They didn't want flat roofs all over town. They wanted to encourage peaked roofs and...
In and of itself, that's not, that's not, that's not, you know, it's not a bad thing, but I, but does anybody know what the zoning? Does anybody know what the density is?
No, we don't get that.
Well, the density was just increased to try to accommodate that second floor above the commercial.
Can you tell me what the density is the next time we meet? Can you tell me what the density is in an email?
Well...
I feel so stupid.
Well, I think what we're going to do is just give Gino some time to explain, you know, I mean, explain what's going on in the B-1.
Can he add a column to this? The narrative says, this is what it says. Can he put a column here that says, "proposed and existing zoning in Norfolk"? And then...
Continue to build the spreadsheet out.
And then have, and then have, and then have Norwood and Millis and Franklin and everything else.
That's fine. What do you think, Gino? You do that?
Yeah, I guess so.
Could you try to make it a density?
The challenge is, when he does that, when you line them up, you're going to have that fruit salad that we talked about where...
It's all right.
And that's where, you know, maybe you can help us in terms of what it means.
Well, that would have to be addressed in the future because that's not something that the zoning bylaw study committee was looking at.
I understand.
Was changing the fruit salad that already exists.
I know, but I'm inclined...
If we're going to change certain articles, why not address it at the article level?
I am inclined, I'm inclined to say, why, why increase the number of bedrooms when the base doesn't make any sense? Why not leave, why make any change, 16 to 32, if you don't have the density right?
Well, let's, let's see what that looks like. Let's let the analysis play out.
I mean, if we can only do, if we can only do plus and minus, I would say, don't, don't make it worse than it already is. And this isn't even getting to the 4,000, because I, because that gets kind of lost as to what is 4,000 doing, because now it's a lot.
Betsy, in terms of timing, we have to, 21 days before town meeting, you know, we're in October here, so town meeting is pretty late this year in November.
Is it the 27th?
29th of November.
A Thursday?
No, it's the 29th.
Yeah, it's late, yeah.
29th is the week, the Thursday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Not Thanksgiving.
No, the next, the following Thursday.
Yeah, just so that we don't, I don't want to confuse anyone.
Number first.
But that's at the very latest.
21 days is the 31st. 21 days is the 31st.
21 days is the 31st?
Of October.
Yeah. Well, I just come to that, I don't know.
Is it calendar days or working days?
I did, I did working days. I didn't do calendar days.
No, it's calendar days.
Calendar days?
Calendar days.
My bad then, sorry.
No, it's usually, it happens when you go 3, 5.
So many people want to go to a hearing on a Saturday.
No.
Well, there's only four days a week here, so that would push it back to mid-October.
We have to do it next week.
We don't have enough time.
So when is, so, so how, if, if, October 31st, which is not going to happen?
No, 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 that was calendar, that was business days.
Okay.
No, so it's 21 days before...
October 1st.
Yeah.
29 minus 29.
Yeah, exactly.
How much time do you need on this end to, to...
I need to advertise two weeks prior to the hearing.
So the earliest you could advertise is the 9th, the 16th, and so the earliest we could have the meeting is the 23rd? So we could have the meeting anytime between the 23rd and the 8th?
Well, the 8th is pushing it.
8th is really pushing it, but the 23rd might give us the ability to actually influence the recommendations of other boards.
I'm going to meet in the 18th. Going to have another one on the 23rd.
If it means, if it means making zoning work because we weren't given enough time to do this?
Well, well, there's actually a related issue, and I don't want to get into all the details, but Gump's Farm would like to come in with a special permit, which, and it, there's an interest in getting the project going, so there's progress visible this year, and I think we can't make the advertising for the 18th.
I don't even have the application.
No, and right.
Well...
And, but the application, the application wasn't, it couldn't be, they didn't know what they were asking for.
I think the meeting we had this week squared away...
Helped to solidify it.
Yeah, I think they know exactly what they're doing. The landscape architect is making some final changes. Jim Lehan and others felt it would be good if we could show some progress, get something going this year. So I think they would appreciate the opportunity of having a planning board meeting, you know, shortly after the 18th, as soon as, you know, whatever the advertising window is that dictates that, so.
Let's take a look.
Well, we were looking at the 1st.
I'm with Steve.
Looking at...
Or the 30th.
Because we could have, we could have the, oh, the 30th?
You said the 30th?
That's fine.
You just think the 23rd's too soon?
Yeah, I, I think the 30th would work for the Gump's Farm folks.
And you can advertise for zoning and...
And Gump's Farm.
Gump's you have to have, Gump's should have to have in by when to advertise?
Two consecutive weeks.
I need it next week.
By the 19th? By the 12th? By the 11th?
Yeah, definitely, because I need to compare the notice, have it to the paper.
Okay. By the 11th?
We'll publication on Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 16th?
Yeah, I can't see that far.
Yes, it is, it's the 16th.
Yes, the 16th is Tuesday. So the 11th, if you've got it by the 11th, you could get it in.
Thank you for being available.
I'm going to be on the West Coast for the 1st of November, but...
Oh, did you want to sign on the 30th?
30th, 30th. Kids have to have, think, holidays here, right? Are the kids not going with you to the West Coast?
Oh, no, no, as a matter of fact, I'm going out there for 24 hours and flying back, so it's pretty crazy. I don't do that too often.
Check your seats.
You're a screwdriver. You're a magic wrench, I'll be honest.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind.
Bring...
I'll have a couple of drinks, that'll take care of everything.
No, are you going to understand?
As I go down the runway.
Do you understand the density?
Yeah, you can't translate, that's why you're having, having a problem, because lot size could be 4,000, it could be 8,000, it could be 12,000.
So the 30th, is that...
Does that work for everybody?
You need a per acre.
We've always been dealing with this, though.
Okay, guys, the 30th, it works?
Yes, yes, I thought that we had...
Yes.
Okay, good.
Did we get sidetracked? What was it, what was it about that last article that you found so, this is the one you did not, this is, this last article was the one that you did not support?
Right, because what we're doing inside this last article, we are already giving the planning board permission to do in the prior article.
Steve, did you vote against the prior article, too?
Not in the final vote.
Yes, you did.
No, not in the final vote. In the prior vote, I did, but not in the final vote.
What changed your mind, Steve?
Well, the, the reason I voted against both, both of them originally was because I didn't want them to be existing at the same time.
Right, that is confusing. So why did you change your mind and vote for it in the end?
Because I actually liked this new article.
Yeah, this, this was Article J, that, it was, the original one was different than this. I suggested adding the, some detail to it.
Right, right. Right, that's right. This is a little bit different than the one that we had originally.
This one?
Yes, well, it, because it has all this additional requirements of it.
So you're saying if you can vary it infinitely, there's no point in...
There's no point in having the last one, right?
Changing the four, the eight to four.
Okay, so we'll pick that up at the meeting on the 18th with Gino's help, okay? So that's something that we need to be working on here over the next couple of weeks.
Could you give it to us beforehand so that we could try to digest it?
Yes.
Anything else that we need to be working on for town meeting between now and the 18th?
Zoning map for floodplain.
Zoning map, okay. Who's got...
There was something else.
The internal...
You've got the map, right?
We physically have the map, it's been around for...
Can you, I just sent you an email, can you forward me the revised map again?
Of course.
Thank you.
Internal inconsistency?
Is the map even ready? Oh, we didn't have enough...
It was ready in May.
Yeah, I thought so.
The internal inconsistency between lot and acreage?
Well, he's going to, Gino can try to...
Okay, okay.
But there was, wasn't there something else that we were going to ask Marion whether we could get something else in there?
I just want the...
The earth removal one?
Oh, the change of the earth removal one, yeah.
Contiguous lots.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Send it to me, copy, media, copy Betsy, copy everybody, but, and I'll forward.
But it's a plan, it's for the Board of Selectmen, so we already know the language that he's going to send, right? He already told us the exact language that he's going to recommend.
What we talked about, yeah.
So he's, so he's going to send it to us, and you're going to send it to Jack Hathaway at the same time?
No, Jeff's going to forward it to Jack.
I think somebody that's saying the planning board has discussed this and we, you know, we, we're in agreement, you know?
I just want them to get it as fast as they can, that's all.
Right, right, okay.
I want to apologize for my outburst earlier. It was related to other things, and I appreciate you getting us back on track.
Good job, Jeff.
I appreciate you saying we do the best we can. Okay.
I don't have any vouchers, but I do have...
Minutes? Do we want to deal with the minutes? We can table that for the next meeting?
We can table it.
Table it.
I do have the, this is the bond form for Pulte Homes, I just need you guys to...
I told you, everyone...
I don't think I voted on it.
Okay.
Waiter from...
Yes.
Is that the bond?
That's why I said, don't...
Are we going to grant it?
Yeah. Why would we?
We've already signed it, right? Is this...
I saw that, Steve.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, good. Well, I'm glad we're...
I did, yeah, I have the bond.
Okay, so you...
I did notice that, I wondered if Bob McGee had spoken to him. Encouraged him to submit the waiver.
Oh, are we still in session?
Yeah, we had, I wanted to sign this first.
You got a majority, you want to sign?
Nope.
No?
This is the latest in the...
Okay, so this is the bond for Fox Run...
You just need a majority.
...for the development.
Mm-hmm.
The guys don't want to sign it?
I don't know if you don't need it.
You got a majority.
Really? Really?
I can't believe the plan had ripper...
I'm not going to let you get away with that.
All right, who's going to make a motion to adjourn?
Dissolve the vote?
It is an inappropriate...
Yeah.
I move to close the meeting at, adjourn at 11:17.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I want to talk about that.
Let me get you in a headlock here. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, folks, thank you for joining us. Thank you, Donna.
It is an inappropriate...